Oh, the thing where it says.
Check, check, check. Check test one, two, one, two. She's got the shirt on and everything. Danny Hurley in the house? I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to mention, are you, are you keeping a low profile tonight? All right. I won't say anything. All right, we're waiting on a little technical glitch here, right? And then the mayor took off. Oh, there he is. We are good? Can I bang the gavel? All right. Hey, welcome back, everybody. The Tuesday, August 15, Bexley City Council meeting. We're back. A lot, some of us are back. It's a little light tonight, but we're gonna make the most of it, and we have a lot of fun people in the audience tonight, too, which is great as well. We are missing Jen Robinson and Monique Lampke. Monique is out at town, and Jen called me, and she sounded terrible. She's really like I am no doctor, but I think it's probably scurvy or something like that. So we're going to do. And we're missing Matt McPeak, too. So I think you're doing roll call.
I can do that. All right. All right. So Ms. Sod?
Here.
Mr. Marcelino. Ms. Fible. Mr. Markham.
Here.
Mr. Klinger.
Here.
And you could just do a motion to excuse the other gentleman.
Motion to excuse our missing comrades. I don't want to say comrades, but yeah. All right.
How about Lamke and Ms. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, all in favor, say hi. All in. Pose same sign. A little rusty. Please rise as pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have some special guests here tonight. First up, much as I love serving the city of Bexley, I have a higher calling at Ohio State. And every now and then, some of my students, it's exciting to see them do some fantastic things. And I opened the dispatch a few weeks ago to see two students from two different periods in my life, both uniting to do something pretty exciting in the state of Ohio and also here in Bexley, right? It impacts us. So if you don't mind, come up to the podium, introduce yourselves and tell us about your project and what's going on.
Yeah, so my name is Anusha Singh, and I'm a second year medical student at the Ohio State University. And my pronouns are she/her. Hi, I'm Ella Roxy. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm going to be a senior at the Ohio State University this coming year. I'm studying political science and criminology. Yeah, so about six years ago, I started an organization at the Ohio State University called PERIOD, and our whole mission was fighting the issue of an issue called period poverty. And that's basically when people lack access to menstrual products and and a group of, you know, an especially affected group of people are students. And, you know, studies show, a national study even reported, it was done by Period Nonprofit and other organizations that reported that nearly one in four students miss class when they don't have access to period products. And I think that really compelled us to do something about this issue, especially since, you know, students are directly affected by this and and we really wanted to advocate for this issue. But obviously, like, I had more of a, you know, science background. I was in Mr. Markham's class and everything. But at the same time, we felt really compelled to advocate and do something about this issue after learning about it. Our whole lives, we've been aware about the stigma around menstruation, but I didn't realize that it resulted in policies like the pink tax, where there was a tax on menstrual products, taxing them as luxury items. So that was our first issue that we took on our student group. We connected with lawmakers from both sides of the aisle, and we talked about how this tax should not exist. We know what, you know, why menstrual products are essential items and, you know, all the effects about, you know, all of the ways that can affect people in our community and Ohioans. So that was the first issue we took on, and for several years, we advocated for this. We got lots of students involved. We rallied. We held the first ever National Period Day, which is, you know, basically a day where we mobilized people to make noise about this issue. And just four days after this, our policy, this bill passed for repealing tampon tax. And then just a few years later, this was the next issue we took on, which was for advocating for free period products in schools. And so, you know, even though our conversations about menstruation started in the State House in, you know, 2018, 2019, it's really not happened overnight. It took a lot of conversations, a lot of senators, and Ella was one of like the key people that I partnered with. She's another, she's a leader at Period OSU now. So I'll let, I'll let Ella talk more about that. So I'm Ella, and I'm the Vice President and Advocacy Chair of Period at OSU right now. So kind of following on the stand on the shoulders of giants like Anusha, right? So Period OSU has been involved in advocacy for a few years now, like she mentioned, repealing the tampon tax. I was still in high school when that happened. It was in 2019, and I just remember thinking, what? There was what on what still? And so it was kind of just one of those no brainer moments. Um, so I, when I took on the role of Advocacy Chair at Period, I did so because, as I like to say, I am a reluctant political enthusiast. As we all know, our political system and many of the people who operate inside of it are deeply flawed. But for people like me, and if I had to guess, people like all of you as well, all roads lead back to politics, right? So I've spent the last year and a half working in state politics, and as flawed as the State House might be right now, seen some incredible work get done by some really remarkable advocates. So I decided that I care about menstrual equity, and it's time that I follow in the footsteps of visionaries like Anusha and use my knowledge of state politics to fight for this really critical goal in the menstrual movement, which is increasing access for young menstruators in schools. So back in November, started working on a policy document compiling resources that I thought would be helpful for legislators, staff members, allies, stakeholders. From the very beginning, I knew that I needed it to be a bipartisan effort, and I wanted to make sure that it wasn't just an unfunded mandate that was going to be burdening school districts. So with those goals in mind, I connected with people who are already engaged in this sort of work and formed a coalition with advocates from across the state, which was really, really cool. We were really delighted early on to have the support of Minority Leader Nikki Antonio and Senator Stephanie Coonsey. And from there, I sent email after email and follow-up email after follow-up email, and finally got a bunch of meetings with some really key legislators. We really received nothing but positive feedback, which goes to show that even in a political environment like today's, there's so much left for us to agree on. One of those things is that our young girls shouldn't be missing school just because they don't have access to a bad. After six long months, I woke up in the morning of July 4th to the news that Governor Dewine had signed the 2024-2025 State Operating Budget. Included within was a mandate that all schools serving grades six through 12 must provide free period products. The state allocated and the state allocated $5 million towards that goal.
It sounded like you said $5 million. Did you say that? Okay, just checking.
And it is our hope that schools will use that money to put dispensers directly in bathrooms so that girls have access to the products they need in the most efficient way. So that's what we're really, really excited about. Next, we plan on continuing our advocacy efforts so that incarcerated women are guaranteed by law to have access to these products while they're in prison. And additionally, we want to make sure that unhoused menstruators have access to the period products that they need. Thank you very, very much for your time. It's an honor to be here, and we're more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for them? Yes, Ms. Sod.
Well, well done, ladies. This is awesome. And your advocacy on finding exactly a surprise that you would think would have already been taken care of was not. And so thank you so much for all your hard work and what you're currently doing. There's more work to be done, as you both know. There are, I would love to grab coffee with both of you at some point, and maybe Mr. Markham here can set up the introduction.
Yeah, I can probably hook you up.
There's definitely been some schools with, I have three children, I'm in a lot of schools, and I've noticed that there's some opportunity, and I would love to share and then let you guys run with that. One thing to kind of consider, I love what Governor Dewine did, but we need to think about young ladies in the fourth and fifth grade as well. So there's more work to do, but amazing. And thank you so much for coming and sharing all of this with us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to respond, like, I'm so glad you brought that up, because that was something that we talked about with lawmakers, too. I think a lot of them were, you know, in conversations with lawmakers, someone mentioned, why, why not just high schools? But we were like, well, middle schools, and maybe even elementary schools, because researchers showing that young girls are getting their menstrual cycles even earlier and earlier. And I think it's even more confusing for them to get it and not have access. So thanks for mentioning that point. It's also a racial justice issue, because black and brown girls are more likely to get their periods earlier. It's evidence showing that it's much more common for them to have periods as early as fourth grade. So that is certainly somewhere that we're hoping to go.
Thank you. I just want to say Ellen Anushia is really incredible and impressive, and I think I love your optimism. And I totally agree with you. And I think I will plug local government, because I think that's where the real fun's at. But it is amazing what you can accomplish with resilience and just keeping it, keeping at it. So good, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much. Thanks, Karen. All right. Next, we have Avery Overly. We have a scholarship award. Lee Nathan's. You got some money to hand out here? Thank you, guys.
You guys bring a big check. Big check. Can't you see it?
Those golden coins.
Our treasurer forgot about the meeting, but it will be in Avery's hands tomorrow.
You know where, you know where Lee lives, right?
On behalf of all of the Bexley Citizens Police Academy alumni, we're delighted to present a check for $500 so that you can continue your that's one of the primary reasons that we're existing is to help support our Bexley police officers and every and their families and everything that they do. And, you know, I, I remember you as a little kid coming to all the activities with overly years ago, and we're proud that you graduated and look forward to continued successes with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The big chat. Yeah.
Avery, I hate to pile on, but I just, I gotta reiterate what Lee just said. I think I just said it to you a second ago, but I I have this memory, whether or not it's accurate, of you playing Minecraft in my office or somewhere really close to it many, many years ago, and being like, what is this Minecraft thing? Which, thank you, you prepared me for my own kids getting into it. So it was very helpful. But I think what the point is that, like, our, our family of employees really is a family. And so it's been an honor and a privilege watching you as you grow, and really excited to see you head off into your college endeavors and wish you the best of luck. Congratulations.
Maybe we could do like a pseudo thing where you just give them all the cash you have in your wallet right now, like as a down payment. Congratulations, and thank you guys for all the good work you do.
We also really appreciate Lieutenant Noble and the work that she does for the city day after day in whatever her role has been. And we appreciate that she's raised a wonderful young man like you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just have another couple of minutes.
Of course.
To give you all briefing on one of our special projects from the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. With the guidance from Mayor Kessler and Chief Lewis, our project of HeartSave Bexley is going to launch at 3:00 PM on Sunday, October 1st. We're going to be doing CPR, compression-only CPR and AED training for all Bexley elected officials that Sunday afternoon. We expect to have the city involved with a lot of communications materials, banners on Main Street, banners to launch the program. And for the months of October, November, and the first half of December, we're going to do two CPR, AED training sessions per week at sites around the community. At the Senior Center, the Bexley Library, the Police Station, Police Headquarters, and any other sites, religious institutions. Bexley United Methodist Church has agreed to hold the site. If you have any suggestions, we'd love to hear about them. We're going to schedule them at convenient times, morning, afternoons, evenings, weekends, so that we can get as many people trained as, as possible. The idea is to improve citizen participation and to save lives from sudden cardiac arrest in Bexley. So stay tuned. Feel free to contact me should you have any further questions, but we'll look forward to working with you. We'll look forward to working with the South Bexley Citizens Association, Community Association, and any other groups that want to be trained in CPR and AED use.
Matt, Sunday, October 1st, 3:00 PM.
Here.
Yeah. Right. What, I mean, thank you for all your work on this. It's like really exciting project, like really literally saving lives, or literally will save lives.
Absolutely. And thank you for your continued support. And thank you, Mayor Kessler and Chief Lewis, and of course Lieutenant Noble.
All right. I think we can move on to ordinances with special guests.
All right. Is this the first, what, first reading? Okay. First reading of Resolution 5-23, confirming the mayor's appointments to the Architectural Review Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning, the Recreation and Parks Board, and the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee introduced by Ms. Robinson. But I guess, Mr. Markham, maybe you
Because she's got the scurvy.
She's got the scurvy.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think we have Tyler Stanley here that we're going to hear from.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Tyler has stepped forward and asked to be considered for our Recreation and Parks Board. Technically, just our Recreation Board, but maybe someday it'll be called Recreation and Parks Board. And so first off, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I mean, our boards and commissions are fueled by super competent and capable residents like yourself. If you could just kind of introduce yourself to council, talk a little bit about your background and see if they have any questions, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, sure. And thank you for the confidence in this opportunity to hopefully represent the community and when it comes to parks and rec. Yeah, so my name's Tyler Stanley. I was born and raised in Bexley, graduated from Bexley High School in 2007. Lived away for several years, almost 12 years. Some of that time included time in the Air Force, so I've lived all over the country for a little while. My wife Audrey and I had our first kid, my daughter Moni, in 2019, and decided this is where we wanted to raise our kids. So we moved back from Denver at that point. So we've lived here since 2019. We now have since had two other kids here in Bexley. So my daughter Moni is, is four and a half. My son Peter will be three in a couple of weeks, and my other son Lucas just turned nine months today. So we have a lot of little people running around the house. Yeah. Happy to meet every day of the week and evenings through bedtime, whatever you guys need. Yeah, so I, I was talking with both Mayor Kessler and Mike Price earlier about, you know, I think I have some unique experience when it comes to the Parks and Rec Board. I've been a participant starting as a very young child in many programs. I then went on to be an employee for many years at Jeffrey Summer Camp and through some, you know, coaching and roughing and different organizations or sporting events. And then now I'm a parent, and I, my daughter, my son have been signed up for many programs here over the last couple of years. So I feel like I've gotten to kind of see it from any viewpoints, and I'm excited that that I might have an opportunity to kind of serve that organization, the Parks and Rec Department. It's been a big part of my life and something that I feel is really key to kind of the identity of Bexley and providing that community feeling and ultimately just that fun aspect of what it is to live in Bexley. So I, I don't know that much about the board and what's going to go into, you know, making the sausage, if you will, of the policies and the programming, but I'm excited to learn, and I'm excited to kind of bring my energy and experience on those different viewpoints to hopefully drive it to continue to be what I think is an amazing department. So.
Thank you for agreeing to join us. Questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Marcelino.
Tyler, I've known you for a while, and I'm just so excited to see your name and your, your willingness to step up to this position. You know, it's, it's rare sometimes for an older person to look up to a younger person, right? But I, you know, since I I met you when you were fresh, and I think I had to make you a junior or something at that time, I've always, you know, really appreciated your maturity, intelligence, and just frankly, your friendliness. And, you know, your family, I just think the world of as well. You've always been a great big brother, Spencer, and, and obviously Chase is great as well. He's all right. But no, but I just thank you so much for your willingness to step up. I know you have a lot on your plate with the family currently, but certainly I know that Bexley's going to benefit from it. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the kind words. Thanks a lot, Sam.
As I said before, tonight, the meeting, I'm excited to work with you, and I love what your background brings to the current rec board. So I'm excited to have you in those meetings, and I know you're going to bring a lot of insight and maybe some ideas for additional programming. So thank you for your service.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We're here for public comments. Natalie, do we have a speaker slips for public comments? In that case, we'll get to the president's report. I'd like to welcome everybody back. Feels like that was a nice break. Maybe, maybe we could use one more week. I don't know, but it was probably, probably sufficient as it is. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that happened in the last week, I think, that are pretty pertinent right now, especially and Mr. Klinger's Land Use Strategy Group has met a couple of times, one of the members of that group, which I think we all value, was Larry Hellman, gave a super interesting talk on Bexley Day at the Bexley Library, but the history of the different Bexley neighborhoods. Fascinating. It is captured on YouTube. If you did not get a chance to see it, you definitely should. Peppered with a lot of current photographs of houses in different neighborhoods, also some historical photographs as well. It was really just really, really well done, phenomenal. It gave me an entry point to bring up one of my favorite subjects again, which was at one point, someone asked Larry about preserving trees in Bexley. And, you know, in the audience, I kind of went, oh. And I think you know what I was thinking. I know Lorian knows what I was thinking, and Larry said, yes, we have a, you know, a landmark tree program here. And I'm very excited that, of course, Larry's very familiar with it. And he also articulated one of the things that I think for me is kind of one of these guiding principles in being a part of government here, which is, you know, the, the respect that we have for individual rights here in the city versus our role in government and trying to promote, you know, the welfare of the community. And where we are with that, with trees, of course, is we don't really want to be able to, you know, force people, you know, to not cut down trees or to cut down trees if it is their right. But also, we have a general welfare interest in preserving the beautiful, fantastic, mature tree landscape that we have. And I've been really, really super happy and excited to see, even though it came with probably my biggest, I don't want to call it defeat, but one of my, one of my tough moments here in, in city council, when my, when my ordinance resolution was pulled back off, but to come back at it with the program that we did, to have the support of the Tree Commission and all of city council and the mayor, and I think the community with something that I think promotes that spirit and also protects the individual rights as well, but provides an incentive for people to recognize and keep those landmark, dare we say, heritage trees. And so I was excited to have Larry mention that as well as part of his. And of course, as we look at that land use strategy, and as we look at the history of Bexley, that long history that we have, and then the future of Bexley, it does include that, those trees, that, that thing that makes us somewhat beautiful and distinct from a lot of other communities and neighborhoods. Oh, look at this. Oh. Oh. Well done, Lee. Well done. And that's all I have for president's report. We'll go to the city attorney.
I have no report this evening.
All right. And then we do not have an auditor. So I don't believe we have an auditor's report. Well. Can you prove we still have an auditor?
So I think we're on to administrative.
Let's get to the administrative update, then. I can grab my chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so kicking off our administrative update is our Recreation and Parks Director, Mr. Michael Price.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just quickly, a couple of quick highlights. We had our first annual teen night at the Bexley Pool on Friday, August 4th. Again, that's a part of our continued effort to connect with this demographic in our community. And was a very, very big success. We thought we, we were shooting for 100 kids. We ended up about 180 kids, and they all behaved themselves extremely well at the pool after hours and had a lot of fun. And it was really, it was nice to see the kids all gather together. They were very inclusive of each other. They supported each other. There was a lot of togetherness, I think, which is always great for that age group, and seemed to generally just really enjoy their time with each other as they're getting ready to go back to school. So that was a big success. Thank you to Josh Hester and our department for organizing that and all the staff that worked on it. There are some pool numbers that have started to come in. We will do a full pool report at the end of the year, but just to give the council an update on sort of the impact of the membership change from going to, from family memberships down to a $50 per person membership. As you'll see in there, we, we saw an uptick in memberships as we expected to. We were, we sort of estimated around 20% increase. We saw just about a, just under 17% increase. So it was in the ballpark of what we thought we might see. We'll go through kind of the financials and what that means from a financial standpoint as we, we finish up the year. But the other thing I'll highlight on that is we talked about going into the summer, we've sort of seen that throughout the summer, that we had a much stronger staffing level, which has been very helpful for the success of the pool and the management of the pool. As is always the case, August becomes a little more difficult as kids go back to school, start up their fall sports of their high school sports. But as of, you know, going into August, we hadn't had to close the body of water due to lack of staffing, which is obviously really good for us relative to where we've been the last couple of years. We are continuing to see, you know, what we'll see sort of week by week how August goes, but still feel better about where we are at this point in time from a staffing level. So thank you to all the, the guards, the, the community members that have stepped up and joined that, that workforce to provide this outlet for our community. A little bit of update on summer camp as well, and I will highlight, summer camp finished up past week. As part of that, we had our talent show on Thursday, and I want to specifically point out the Ryan Smiles Solomon Scholarship Fund, which was a generous gift by the Solomon family in honor of their son, Ryan Solomon, who passed away in 2021, who was a former camper, actually, when I was a counselor there. But as part of that program, we awarded Tommy Webster, which is one of our staff members, with a $2,500 scholarship through that fund, as well as, we will still work through the numbers, but we're going to max out $15,000 in family scholarships for camp participants through the Ryan Solomon Fund as well, which over three years, that that's been in places, has donated over $39,000 to support families in need. So Uh, which, uh, over three years that that's been in places has donated over thirty-nine thousand dollars to support families in need. So. A big thank you again to, uh, the Solomon family for this generous gift, uh, to our community. Um, and then last but not least, we have this, this Saturday is a splish, splash and dash. Um, again, I want to thank, uh, Lorian Fiebel for chairing our volunteer organization, which, uh, really. Without the volunteers and we require, I think, seventy-eight volunteers to make that event work. Uh, we, we could not do this event without them. They are essential to keeping our kids safe on the streets, uh, in the, in the woods. Um, and, uh, you know, knock on wood, we have, we have a really good track record with safety, but that is because of the volunteers that we have. We, we truly couldn't do it without them. So thank you, Lorian, for all your, your, uh, leadership on that. Thank you to all the volunteers that will be there. Special thank you to the cross-country team and the, uh, boy soccer team and Paramount. Who come out in, uh, with big numbers for our, 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 our event and, um. Obviously we are still looking for volunteers. I know some council members are volunteering as well. I appreciate all the support. And, uh, hopefully you, if you can't come out and volunteer, you can come out and cheer on some kids. It's really a fun community event. So, uh, we appreciate all the support. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Now, just a couple anecdotes I had from the pool. Um, I did talk to, uh, probably three or four families at least that loved the, the new pool structure. And I know we want to make it affordable, more affordable for everyone, but a couple of the families that, you know, they belong to J C C. And they hadn't got Bexley Pool memberships in the past and they found that they could do both because they have friends at both locations and their kids both want to go. So they, you know, and it. They loved it. Um, and then also I work with a woman who, um, her granddaughter was a lifeguard at, um, the Bexley Pool and she lives in Reynoldsburg. And now she wants to move to Bexley. She loved it so much and she loved working. She loved being a lifeguard at Bexley Pool. So. It's good anecdotes. Yeah.
It's, uh, I think that your, your first point was really good point in terms of what we were seeing different in terms of our membership. I think we also anecdotally speaking, because I don't have any data on this at this point, but we see a lot more middle schoolers in general. Because as the family gets a little older, it's like, well, why do we really want to buy a full membership for the family? We're not going to go as much. Our kids are sort of off doing their thing. Uh, we seem to see more middle schoolers where it's like, hey, it's fifty dollars. I can come and go as I please as a middle schooler. And so that's been, that's been really good for us as well. Thank you.
Jess?
Yes, just to speak to that, um, it's twelve when they can go by theirself. Eleven. So, yeah, parents love that, right? And it was a lot of kids biking over to the pool, which is what you want to see. And I hear all the time, people, when they visit Bexley, they're always surprised on how many kids actually are still out there biking. Um, I'm really proud of that. And, um, yeah, I agree. I agree. It was a very like equitable place for a lot of these teens to go to. And they felt like they belonged and they can have their independence and go by themselves. And everything Matt said, um. Resonates with me as well as people having multiple memberships because of that individual fifty dollars. So all great things.
Anything else for Mike? I, I'm going to pile on and, uh, obviously. I'm very excited about seeing the numbers increase the way they did. I think that's exactly what we hope to see. I am thrilled. Um, I know one of the concerns that was raised potentially was that that increased enrollment. Would or membership, I guess, would, would result in maybe. Chaos at the pool or overcrowding. Have we seen that or what's that looked like?
Sorry, we have not seen that. Uh, we have not gotten reports of that. We haven't got negative feedback on that. We will do a, a survey where people. Maybe are more comfortable with sharing any of those concerns and we'll gather that information, but anecdotally speaking, we haven't had an issue with that. Um, and also this year we, we sort of went back to our normal camp hours there as well. So that also added more people and. Uh, it seemed to work out pretty well.
It's great.
And, and I will say I would be remiss if I didn't thank you, Mayor. This was sort of your brainchild and so I appreciate the support on this and it has been, it has been successful. So thank you.
We'll bring it down more next year, right? See what the budget looks like.
Mayor Kessler, um, one thing I wanted to say is, Mike, you can speak to this, but didn't we find an uptick in the usage of the basketball courts?
We did, and I think it's because we're seeing, I think we're seeing more of that age group, frankly, as part of the reason, but yeah.
Well, and I think that was like the hope was that we would make this more accessible to more corners of our community and really drive more participation. And that's the whole point of the community pool is to see the community. So good work, Mike. Thank you to your and your team. Um, next up, we have Mr. Bayshore Service Department Update. Andy joins us from the internet. At an undisclosed location offsite. Hey, Andy, how are you doing?
Good evening. How are you?
Okay, I was worried that might happen. We have an audio issue on incoming. That's why you're having that experience. I wonder if I hit the wrong button. Try again, Andy.
How about now?
I accidentally hit a button over here. I think I might have messed it up. I'm just pushing more buttons. That really, phew. Okay, so. Good, good thing we've had experience with technical issues here. Andy, I'm going to call you on my cell phone. Call Andy Bayshore.
Do we need to start the meeting over again?
Incoming. And so Andy, make sure to disconnect from your audio on Zoom when I call you and be sure, get prepared for the same. Exercise. Andy, how's it going?
Good.
There we go. Look at that. So Andy, you ready for your update?
Yes, sir. Um, the only thing I might want to add to my report, uh, just a little more detail on a couple of projects going on. Um, let me guess, we'll be off college Thursday. Um, Tampa moves in on Saturday, so there will not be any hiccups with that. Um, once they get done with college, that crew will also go to Pleasant Ridge to join the second crew. And we're hoping they can knock Pleasant Ridge out, um. A little sooner than we hoped. Um, they are behind schedule, so we're kind of pushing them to, um, get it done so we can get Pleasant Ridge, hopefully pave this fall. Um, then I just wanted to touch on Drexel. Um, we did hit a snag last week, um, cost a couple of days and we did lose a day yesterday. I'm still estimating, I'm hoping around. The second to third week of September, we should be done with all the concrete work. Again, kind of push them. I know that project is, uh. Seemed ongoing, um, but they are working and we are pushing them, um, to try to get it done as soon as possible. Happy to answer any questions.
Why don't you tell, uh, council what we found in one of our medians on Drexel as we, uh, as we did some excavation?
Actually, we found them in two and that's probably the holdup and snag we hit. We actually found. Uh, into the median's old trolley tracks. Um, and the, the need to trolley tracks, we had to bust up. The first one I think was seven inches of concrete and I. The first one was seven inch concrete. The second medium was around nine inches of the concrete. We had to. Bust up so we could get, you know, some clean dirt and get that out of there. So when we planted trees. You know, we'll be ready to go.
Nine inches of concrete. So they were like giving concrete away back then, basically. Any questions for Andy?
Jess?
Yes.
Andy, thanks for, um, all the work you've done and, um, helping with all the communication with all these projects and, um. Drexel being one of those. Um, do you mind copying that? There was a letter that went out today to all the residents of, uh, Drexel. Correct? Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually on my update. The letter.
I will let that be.
Yep.
Yeah. Never mind, we're good.
Cool.
Um, just to touch on that real quick, um, we have, you know, the, right now we have a block closed and we'll have another block closed next week. Um, the residents right in that block, uh, get a door hanger the week before. And we're also, um, updating the service page, um, website with updates on, um. All the street projects and the Columbia Gas Project also.
Any other questions for Andy? All right. Thanks, Andy. Appreciate it. Thanks for dealing with our technical eccentricities.
Can I tell you how relieved I am that the answer to your question, what they found was trolley tracks? So is the chief, right? Yeah.
Man, didn't mean to create drama there. Sorry about that. Uh, we are so excited to take a look at the budget with Beecher's bottom line for things Tuesday. Uh, Beecher. You there?
Can you hear me?
Are you muted on your cell phone now, Beecher?
Could be.
Did he? He was on here. You're, are you still on Mike's cell phone, Beech? Talking to the cell phone. Oh, he's still trying to zoom connect. The Zoom audio is not working, so Mike called you on his cell phone. Just use your cell phone. Talk through that. I don't think you can hear us. Let's, let me try. Andy says he can hear Beecher. Well, that's because.
Can you hear me?
Just to let you, I accidentally hit a button back here and. It's a button we never hit, so I don't know. I'm not going to just keep hitting buttons. That's a, I tried to unhit it. That didn't work. So the internet can hear Beecher, but we can't. So Beecher, if you can hear us, call my cell phone and we'll talk through my cell phone. There he goes. So.
Hello?
I'm going to start with Beecher's bottom line as he calls in. Uh, no, I don't want to take the, I don't want to take the fire out of, uh, this presentation. Don't know what's going on here. There. Struggling, struggling. So as you guys can see, oh, there he is. Okay, that's because we were both calling each other. So Beecher, we've got Beecher's bottom line on here. You want to, uh, walk us through it?
Yeah, they're, they're quickly, just run through it real quick. Um. Bottom line is, it's a good broken record. We continue to do better, um, each month in revenue, mostly driven by income tax. Um, also we've had, because the rising interest rates, we've had good, um. Investment income this year significantly higher than projected. Um, so overall, we're about nine hundred thousand dollars better in revenue. Again, all four major categories of. Uh, general fund spending being public, public health and safety, public service, general government recreation. They're all better than forecast. Um, as a result, we're, oh, we have a better than projected ending balance. It's better by three to fifty-two thousand, but of course that includes the one million dollar, one point nine million dollars loan. We were able to get to the test on for those projects. And so overall, things continue to look good.
Great. Uh, any questions for Beecher?
Is that, is that incremental? Progress on the expected revenue? Or is it like, did we have a great month and then it's steady over the last four?
Incremental where we've got to so far. At, at year to date, we're about nine hundred thousand dollars better than budget. And of course, that also includes being under budget and grants just due to timing of five hundred ninety-one thousand. Or else it'd be even better than that.
And the lion's share of the grants variance, um, just to talk through that, we have. State capital fund money and that, and we also have the Bexley Community Foundation, um, Year of the Parks money. Uh, Year of the Parks is actually going to probably come in over several years, probably a three-year, uh, income. And then state capital grant, uh, until we bid out and begin the bridge project, that's not coming in. So that's, uh, that's that discrepancy. But remember. Grants, grants have, has an income line on them and then an exact opposite expense. So be, we also are much lower in expenses. Because we're not, uh, spending over those, uh, over the bridge at least. Uh, the, the Year of the Parks BCF one is a little bit different because we have that. Commitment. So there has been some expenditure, but it's a reimbursement based grant. So it'll, it'll lag that. Beecher, any, anything else? Sorry, any other questions for Beecher? All right. Beecher, thank you for, uh, joining us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a good evening. Thanks, bye. Sorry about that. Um. And then, uh, I believe our next update is the chief. If I'm not mistaken. Chief Lewis. Happy August. Nothing to, to add. There's, um, one of the, the dynamics. We wanted to just capture. So what's been happening this summer, but more importantly, I'm at my one-year anniversary and I thought that it would be. Thought that it would be helpful to recap some of the accomplishments that we've made over the past years. We've also included that in this report. Yes, sir.
Probably on the record, there are a number of them that, um, um, pretty significant accomplishments, to be quite honest with you. Um, we're very proud of what we've done in the past year. Um, a lot of progress in a lot of areas with, um, really the key stakeholders. You know, this started out as a three-year strategic plan. Um, we've met a lot of those objectives and, um, I've already tasked and challenged the department. To think about what we're going to do next year and accomplish. From that wish list wants and needs of what we need to do and then challenging their supervisors and themselves. Uh, to just continue to get better and improve. So very excited for what we've accomplished in the direction that we're going.
Chief, I want to. I want to thank you and tell you how much I appreciate your service to our community and, and looking back over this first year. Uh, what a gift it's been to have you with us.
Well, thank you.
Um, it kind of was personified for me in many ways at the National Night Out event that you hosted and. Last time council met was in June. We did not have it on the books that we would be doing National Night Out. In fact, I think it was a scant. Two or three weeks ahead of time, the chief called me and he's like, what do you think about stuff? Like, yes, let's do this. And we, uh, we mobilized, but you mobilized, your department, Lieutenant Overly, many others in your department. Um, with the help of our celebrations and events team and the rec department that really came through. Uh, really put on, and this are the citizens, police, citizens, police academy alumni. Uh, put on a fantastic community event and just watching. Not just the collaboration, but the show of support from the community, uh, from real cross-section of community. It was, it personified the success of this program. And so I want to thank you for that and. I said to somebody as we were walking through, I said. Think, I, I don't remember exactly what I said, but it was something along the lines of, uh, you know, this is. This is, this is why we brought Chief Lewis to Bexley. This is, this is shows. Thank you for agreeing to come and for continuing to work with us. So. Any, any, Jess?
Um, I want to speak to that as well. And I will say that night at National Night Out. Everything that we talk about and we talk about being equitable and inclusive, it was felt. And so leaving that event that night. It felt really special and it felt like everything that you would talked about, all the processes we went through and hiring you. And it just felt really good. Made me really proud to be a part of this whole, you know, thing and, um. Councilman or Klingler and I, we got our work cut out for us that night because we were working the bounce. Equity. So I want to call out Matt. We were a good, uh, tag team there and then we, we did have to shut those down because it was getting to be.
Why, why weren't you guys in the dunk tank? I don't understand. Have they?
It served and we were, yeah, definitely have serviced that night, but, um, thank you so much. It was such a special night. A lot of, um. Uh, citizens have asked if we, is this new? Have we done this before? And I said, no, it's new. And they're excited to be a part of it next year. And these were people walking the sidewalks who would just walk by the event as I'm heading home on my golf cart to ask, what was that? And I mean, the helicopter did, uh, the ante just a little bit. Um, but it was, it was just a really special night. So you've done a lot of that this year as far as reaching out and doing community events and, um. And it goes a long way, but that inclusivity and the, um, just that being equitable, felt all that that night. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just love your presence. Everywhere. I love your presence everywhere. I love that you, uh, are the face of the department. And that there is a face for the department and, you know, and, and you. Make yourself real with the family that you bring with you and that makes you. Feel that much more like you're a part of a community that cares about, you know, people. So. And I especially loved you wearing your crown to bloom with the bloomers. You were awesome.
Yes, same.
One last thing, just to touch on what Lorian was saying, and I agree a whole lot earlier there. I think it's been said so far, but not only the face of this department, but you're bringing faces of other departments. And that also is incredibly important for our community and, uh, and our, our children, et cetera, see. Um, and so I really appreciate you collaborating with the local departments as well to help them become a part of our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
I think when we set out, uh, set out on the hiring process, the one thing we kept talking about was the culture. We wanted. A, um, a, a, a culture refresh. We wanted a, um, a, a, a culture refresh and um, I, I saw it, I see it every day, but I saw it today. I was driving down Bryden, my street, got to Cassidy, the Schmidt kids and Hunt kids were on the corner selling lemonade. And there's Officer Chapin Chapman's uh drinking lemonade. I had to razz him. Uh, I, I said, you guys have a permit to sell lemonade on the street? Uh, but it's, it's little things like that. Um, we see them everywhere and uh, it's thanks to you. So thank you. Thank you. It's great.
Well, chief, we're all going to say something about uh, your national night out because it, it was just such an amazing thing. And you know, when we were looking for a new police chief, I know one of the things that, one of the things we were really looking for that, that you brought to the table is community policing. And I just think this event was such a fantastic, you know, beyond probably what we would have hoped to come, you know, out of that uh, out of that first year. And, and to see the enthusiasm of the people that came out and it helped to have really nice weather, helped to have a helicopter. But you know, what really helped was to have uh, police officers that just, they were just so fully into it, you know? And, and they were just out there uh wanting to meet the community, community, wanting to meet them to interact, you know, and have that fellowship. Uh, my favorite moment is to see um Sergeant Fleming with his custom made police uniform for the dunk tank that he was in. And uh, just so much fun. And, and you really, I mean, I think we cannot congratulate you enough on that event because it really was just an amazing evening here in our community. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I would be remiss if I um, first, very humbled by all the feedback. So thank you. Two, what an amazing community. Um, I have been blessed to be able to serve and, and call myself chief of police for the city of Bexley and the residents. I wear that truly as a badge of honor. Um, to collaborate with each and every one of you around this room has been another blessing. Uh, Mike will tell you, he and I um, three weeks before had this idea. And he said, hey, let's beta test this space and see if it works. What do you think? And when I tell you, we put this together in a very short order and I called the mayor and I said, can we do it? And he said, let's do it. And it really was leveraging um relationships. It was leveraging um, communication and just getting out and, and um, the way the community responded, it was so um uh, very humbling and to see um, boys, girls, um, all ages, African American kids um, within an adjacent community engaging um, parents, people walking up and saying, hey, I just wanted to come over and meet you. Um, what's going on? This is fantastic. Um, to me, that was um, not by design, but it captured what this past year has been about. And so I think that it did something that none of us probably ever would have imagined. Um, obviously we will continue to build on the success of that. Uh, but there's been a lot of other things. And so I thank you. Um, each one of you have showed up at all the events that we've done from retiree cookouts to uh holiday events. And uh, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge your support for showing up as well. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right. Now for the moment you've all been waiting for uh, my updates, which I will keep quick, believe it or not, much to your surprise. So I wanted to add, I, I had to piggyback a little bit off of Troy's uh Larry Hellman Bexley Day presentation comment. Because I enjoyed the past couple, well, week and a half, I guess, in the state of Maine, uh, which is gorgeous. It's very nice. I drove back over two days to get here yesterday evening, got back into town. So I'm a little loopy today, a little tired. Um, but the thing that happens when you drive back into Bexley, it happens every time you come back from a vacation. And it's that like feeling really like, oh, I'm home like, and it's like something calming about the, the trees and the, and the architecture and the community center and Main Street. And, and my kids even said, I've got to have a, had Brew who's entering sixth grade and his buddy Chance, who was at summer camp with him. And they both commented on it. And my, my kiddo Sal commented, oh, oh, that feeling, uh, we're home. Um, and that is um, it's intentional, like it doesn't happen by accident and it happens through uh, the, the hard work of so, 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 so many people. Um, and so thank you for all of your hard work. Um, that's one of the things that when we have this break in the summer, we get to kind of take a little bit of moment to reflect on some of that. And um, I am honored and, and privileged to be serving alongside you guys. I really appreciate all of your insight, collaboration and sometimes disagreement. And we hone each other. And that I think is a, a, the essence of this body and this group of people and the passion that we have for the community. It was also really rewarding to, even though I wasn't here for it, that's another evidence of strong communities. A lot of FOMO going on, right? So the talent show at summer camp, uh, Bexley Day celebration about 10 years ago. Um, looking at the calendar in the summer, I was like, August 10th, nineteen oh eight, August 10th, nineteen eight, why aren't celebrating August 10th? Uh, and so Bexley Day was born. And I think start off with a birthday cake at a farmer's market um, back in the day. But watching the community braces and kind of put their own spin on it as part of what's so joyful about this work is to see things evolve and develop. And it's now it's a thing. And if you, if you read the Bexley buzz, you might even say people have said, I've never heard of this day. What is it? And uh, don't worry, uh, the, the day that was taken off yesterday for Bexley Day by city staff uh, is a net neutral holiday. We have not added more uh holidays in case that uh, anyone had any questions about that. Um, I want to thank our staff who worked really, really, really hard for the July. I know it was a while ago, right? But we haven't had a meeting since then. Um, it was just such a privilege to watch this machine humming as our service employees came in, our police department employees came in rec. And they worked uh, from sunrise, past sunset into the next sunrise tirelessly to uh, make that event happen. And it's just such a joy to see that. And, and what was really cool about it is the, the sense to which our, our employees really do care, like they really own that, that job that they do. Uh, thanks chief for putting together a grill tent for our employees at the Fourth of July evening. That was awesome. Um, and uh, so that was a, a, a privilege to see. And we have, of course, have had so many community events this summer. Um, which leads me to reminding people that Smoke and Fire Festival is coming up on August 26th at Schneider Park. That is a Bexley Celebration Events uh, event. Uh, and then a scant week later, we will be having the Labor Day Block Party and Brew Fest on Main Street. So there's a lot going on here pretty soon. So relax a little longer because we've got some volunteer hours to kick in from splash and dash uh, and forward. I'm always looking for cookout crew assistance uh, and point of sale people as well for Labor Day. So please let me know if you're able to help out with that. Another thing that happened since we um last we're in council chambers is our aggregation program went live. Letters hit residents' doors or mailboxes, I guess. Uh, and we've answered a lot of questions about it. We have had two public workshops where we, I surprisingly well attended and I really enjoyed that. Um, and we posted the, that to our YouTube uh, channel. And um, those who, who are still in um, did not, those who didn't opt out, uh, the rates go into effect in September. You probably won't succeed until, you know, a bill, bill that hits your mailbox in October. Um, but uh, AP rate, you know, is at eleven point two cents per kilowatt hour. We're at six point eight something. So we can, you know, and that trend doesn't look like it's going to change anytime soon. That's the least of the end of September. So we're saving, you know, residents a lot of money through a lot of hard work and it didn't happen by accident. And you guys were so well educated by the time it happened that we were ready to, to act quickly and decisively at a time when it made a lot of sense. And I think we're going to continue to see that pay back dividends to our community. So kudos to you guys for your work through that. Um, there's another piece to that, that I think we didn't even, we were so focused on rates and opt out and opt ins and communication that we uh, it didn't get highlighted very heavily, but there's about, I think, a nineteen thousand dollars per year that comes back to the community through aggregation that can be used on energy efficient projects. So we'll be hoping it's, it's a, it's a, it's almost like a um, like a gift card. It's like a use it or lose it thing, you know, that they offer through uh Dynegy. So we'll be um, looking at, you know, additional car charging stations for the public, uh, solar, that sort of thing. Other renewable projects that would be able to be funded through that, um, that piece of aggregation, which is great. Um, I think I said I was going to be quick and I just lied through my teeth. Uh, two more things. Three more, two more things, uh, three more things. Uh, we had a great splash pad grand opening. Uh, the pond is nearing completion at the end of August, probably for Commonwealth Park Pond. The uh, landscape piece of that contract has started. Uh, I think that's right. That's what I heard today. Right? Uh, the Follies bid has been awarded, so that'll be starting pretty soon. You're going to see a lot of changes. It was good that we did national out on the, you know, early August because Commonwealth uh, Commonwealth Columbia is about to get um, torn up as the utility work starts. That is uh, the predicate to the future work there in the plaza. So you'll start to see some, some action there. We're going to bid on the final piece of Schneider Park Trail Improvements. And you might say, how are there final piece to Schneider Park Trail Improvements? But it has always been a piece of this year, the parks project that we would bring back that staircase that used to be at Aster. Will provide better access to Dog Park and some of the benches and plantings, uh, grills, public amenities to that trail space. Um, so that should be uh, starting here later this fall. Uh, and then the library, uh, pocket park design continues. There is some narrative here about the Drexel Traffic Common Construction Update. One thing that I want you, hopefully that you guys can understand is that um, Drexel's paving piece is funded through ODOT. We cannot control their timeline. Uh, they're going to be paving Drexel in the spring. We would love it if they would pave Drexel in the fall. They are not going to be paving Drexel in the fall, pending any sort of miracle of phone calls that we may try to make. Um, so that's going to include the piece of Broad Street that was many years ago supposed to be paid by ODOT and Drexel. But the, the median bump out work will be done in September. Um, and we'll be planting trees this fall. So you'll get it. We'll, we'll have a really strong sense of what that looks like. Uh, and then finally, we do have back to school happening on Thursday. Um, one of the things that you will notice is a look at that, isn't that? Oh, I don't have a photo here. Oh, shoot. Okay. Um, at the intersections of Castonham and Dale, uh, we have new signage that talks about not unloading passengers at the stop sign. And in general, um, I've just seen an increase in that. And also parents just unloading kids in the middle of the street, like, you know, in the, in the travel lane. So we're going to be providing a strong emphasis on communications around that. Also just around generally safe student behavior when it comes to crossing streets and um, following the laws pertaining to cycling and helmets and all that. So we'll be sending a communication out to the community tomorrow. This is a draft of it. Um, I couldn't remember, is it sixteen and under? That's the helmet law, I think, is what I wrote it, or is it under sixteen? I think it's, it's under sixteen. Okay. I'm going to make sure I get that, that right. Um, so with that rambling update, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just out of curiosity, and what kind of surface can we expect then over the winter or whatever on Drexel then? What does that mean?
So the, the area where the concrete is being installed, they come back through and you've seen it on areas that have already happened and they'll, they'll do a patch of concrete. So the road surface will be fully functional. It's just not going to be that smooth. Okay. Um, the uh, final coat of asphalt that comes in the spring, that's a mill and overlay. And you know, as, as, as tiresome as this project is undoubtedly been to residents who live on Drexel, a mill and overlay is like a day or two project, you know? Come through quickly overlay. So that part will be fast and uh, and much easier on the residence. Uh, and then after that goes into place, we do our final punch list, which will include the thermo, like the really durable paint on the street for the crosswalks. Um, it'll include one more pedestrian activated beacon at Powell. Um, and maybe some additional signage. So some, some final pieces will come in at that point. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Two things. Do you have an update on the RFP for the skate park?
Yes. We do.
Yeah, we, we have a, well, I actually sent over a mark today. Um, some contract language from Hunger Skate Park as the uh, selected design team for that. So we have a contract that we'll have to work through, hopefully sign shortly and start the design, design effort for that.
Awesome. And then getting back to Drexel, all of the utility work under Drexel has been completed, right? Yes, I noticed that sanitary storm water. So we won't have to go back in and correct.
Yeah, this is, you know, the.
Black peace, even though it's going in the spring, we have all the work done before.
Drexel has been uniquely challenged with a lot of work happening on it. Um. This is very strange.
Yeah, just on, somebody has taken over my laptop. So I'm going to close that for a second. That's weird.
Um. Uh, it's, it's odd. I know. Um, maybe it's just a glitch, I hope. Uh, so it's just, it's, uh, so the, the fact that all of that underground utility work has occurred already is a really good thing. That just means we're not going to be in, in, in Drexel for a long time coming. Uh, all new water lines, uh, big sewer upgrades. It's been a, it's a, it's a big project. It's been a long project because it's a big project, right? Any other questions? So. Jess, sorry.
Um, do you want to give the update on the letter that?
So a letter, a letter, I mean, we've been communicating with residents throughout. It's been a little bit since we've sent a letter. Uh, the, the text that was on the screen is um, sort of a generic version of letter, but we, we sent out a letter uh, this morning to residents. The text of that letter is on the agenda. It's attached to the uh, minister update. Yep. And thank you, Jess, for encouraging that and helping to uh, think through communication with us. Appreciate it. I don't think anyone's taking over laptop, just in case you're worried about that. But just in case, I'm gonna restart. Sorry, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, Mr. Fisher. All right, we have on the consent agenda, the minute, meeting minutes from June 27th, 2023.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from city council or from the audience on the uh, consent agenda? If not, I will move to adopt the consent agenda. May I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Klinger. Um.
Um, Ms. Bible.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Mr. Mercilino.
Yes.
Ms. Zad.
Yes.
Mr. Klinger.
Yes.
We have no third readings this evening. We will head on to a lengthy title of a second reading. Ah, second reading of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-three, declaring the improvements to the former Trinity Seminary apartment site to be a public purpose. Declaring such improvements to be exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners thereof to make service payments in lieu of taxes. Designating the public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit the real property, establishing a public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments, authorizing a revenue sharing agreement with the Bexley City School District and authorizing a tax increment financing and redevelopment agreement with the developer of the site introduced by Mr. Klinger.
Look at you. Welcome back.
Thanks, Mark, for reading that. So just to refresh everyone, this um, is in regards to the site directly to the west of us, the, what is it, two and a half acre, three acre, three acre site to the west of us. Um, it's a TIF agreement um, for the property. But as I understand, we don't have a lot of information uh, from the Bexley um, City School District and what they're going to do. And um, the developer has not gone past ARB and BZAP yet. So um, it is my plan to table it this evening after second reading. Um, so we can get all the details hammered out and then come back, bring it off the table, put the details into it. And then we can have a third reading in the future.
Do we have a timetable on, on what, when we expect some input from the school board or?
So I believe the school board has a September 13th meeting when they'll be discussing this.
Okay.
I think it's the 13th. Um, and then BZAP, just for your information, the August 24th is their initial preliminary review of the site plan.
What was, say that again. I'm sorry.
August 24th.
Um, August 24th.
Yep. And there's. You know, they have not even, I think, solidified a draft site plan yet. So I think uh, you know, I, I would expect it to continue. continue past September through the zoning process, I would imagine. But we will continue to communicate that out to
And the the uh antenna, the TIF is uh parking structure, is that right? Is that what I remember?
Yeah, it's the, it's the public improvement that they are hoping to help fund with TIF is the public parking structure that will allow parking not just for the project, but uh access from adjacent properties as well.
Mr. Klinger, do you anticipate then uh if we put this um on the table, then we may be ready to revisit it after that September thirteenth meeting? Or is that just where we'll get an idea of what?
We typically uh in past, I don't think we've approved these without um BZAP's approval and ARB's approval.
And then, so and then, I'm sorry, I I guess
That timeframe could take longer.
That's we're looking at long term. So we're really looking at maybe putting this on the table for a while then until we
Think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, but but having said that, I think we'll probably wanna take it off the table, just discuss it after
Sure, sure.
Um and and once there's a solid, kind of more solidified site plan slash unit count square footage, we can send out the uh tax impact analysis we talked about.
So my request to you then is if we do end up putting this on the table tonight to just sort of be cognizant of like developments that are that are coming your way and then taking it off the table regularly to update us on that, if that sounds, that's what I would
Yep, I keep, I keep it on my radar and provide updates.
And then I think any, any other questions or comments for uh Mr. Klinger about this? Comments or questions from the audience to this is a second reading. There's no speaker slip required. If not, then uh I think you have a motion and it sounds like.
I'll make a motion to table ordinance nineteen dash twenty-three.
Motion to, motion to table my, by Mr. Klinger, seconded by Ms. Saad. Give us, I guess, give us a little call.
Okay, Mr. Mark.
Yes.
Mr. Klinger.
Yes.
Ms. Saad.
Yes.
Mr. Mercilino.
Yes.
Ms. Bible.
Yes.
Thank you.
You still have a lot of work in first reading.
Yes, now we got first readings. That's what it should look like afterwards, after a long break. So we have a first reading of ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-three to appropriate ten thousand dollars from the water fund and ten thousand dollars from the sewer fund to pay overtime for the remaining of twenty twenty-three, introduced by Ms. Lamke. I think Ms. Bible is up.
I think we've got Saad.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know that.
She just wanted me to, yeah, Matt's getting me a water right now for all of these. Um so it basically is exactly what it says, but I'm gonna let the mayor speak to why um we need to appropriate.
So this is a, I I I am told, this is the story I'm told, uh that we had, we had overtime budgeted in water fund and sewer fund in our, in our written budget. But it was not in the budget ordinance. So we don't currently have a budget for overtime. That issue was raised as we were accruing overtime from uh water breaks and 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 sewer work. Um so we just need to put back into the adopted budget what was in the budget as presented and and just to that doesn't make any sense. The budget book is not actually what you guys approved. You approved an ordinance that has all those line items. And somehow it didn't carry through apparently to that ordinance. And I will let Matt McPeak and Butcher Hill either confirm or deny that at a future meeting. You do not need to suspend or adopt that.
Jessica, I put you in charge of making sure that uh McPeak gets that request from us.
You got it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right.
All right.
Sorry, we do have one here.
Oh, will that cover the expect, I obviously will it cover, and so there's a chance it'll be less than ten thousand dollars, so we just
Yeah, there's a chance that it would be less than ten thousand.
Okay.
Okay, we now have first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-three to appropriate fifteen thousand nine hundred and six dollars for the law enforcement trust fund, Fund eighteen, and to appropriate twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars from the DUI Enforcement and Education Fund, Fund twenty-four, introduced by Ms. Lamke, but Ms. Saad.
Yes, so um looking to appropriate the fifteen thousand nine hundred and six from the law enforcement trust fund and appropriate another twenty-one thousand four twenty-five from the DUI Enforcement Education. Um and I will let the mayor give us a deeper dive here.
So this is um at last, in June, you all approved an ordinance that allowed these funds to expend money that had been gathered uh through law enforcement activities. Ohio Revised Code very strictly defines what can be spent out of law enforcement trust funds and the DUI Enforcement and Education Fund uh related to training and other um kind of narrow uh activities. I am going to leave it as generic as that uh because frankly, I do not know the exact activities that we're using those for, but I can get that answer for you. And uh from the chief and let you know what they are.
Um any other comments or questions? All right, we will look for that additional information at the second reading.
Okay, now we have a first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-three to appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars to the senior program professionals account, zero one dash three five five dash five one one three five to cover the additional costs associated with an increase in programming introduced by Ms. Lamke, but Ms. Saad filling in.
Yes, so um I believe this has just changed the way it was funded in the past and what we had believed that we had needed. Now we need a little more, but I'm gonna let Mayor Kessler and um Mr. Price do a deeper dive.
So essentially, what happens when your seniors are having a lot of fun? More funds are used, but also more income comes in as a result. So this is a, this ordinance is a success story of our senior programming. Uh Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh do you want me to add anything or did you do with that?
Well, what, I'm fine with that. That sounds great to me. Happy to answer your questions.
Can you tell us, get, tell us what like, what uh what more programming is going on? What's the increase?
So uh uh bold transparency, which is what we're all about here. Um obviously, there's an offset, which is great. Uh as you see in the ordinance, um we spent about through June, we spent about twenty-six thousand of a thirty thousand dollar appropriation and had generated about thirty-three thousand. So so generally speaking, the the costs are designed or the revenues are designed to offset pretty much dollar for dollar, which it's in the ballpark. Um so we'd expect to see that. So as we ask for additional appropriations, we'll expect to see that offset continue through the rest of the year. Uh so our revenue will be up. Um I will say if we, as I did a deeper dive into this, going back historically on this account uh in twenty twenty-two, we moved, if you may remember, we moved senior services out of the rec fund into general fund. Uh in twenty twenty-two, we had a sixty thousand dollar line item as we were trying to roughly sort of guess what our expenses would be uh in that structure and with the change to a senior center from a the BAC. And so we're going through a lot of changes. We estimated sixty thousand. It it turns out that that's probably more accurately what it should have been, but we didn't uh when we made that switch over, some of the expenses got pushed against still recreation fund items as opposed to senior funds in twenty twenty-two. So when we looked at budging for twenty twenty-three, we said, well, we spent thirty-five thousand. We had sixty thousand appropriated. We can cut that back. We cut that back and realized we've actually been, you know, we're doing a lot more stuff and it was just, it was posted incorrectly against rec fund stuff. Um so talk with Butcher about that and that's been cleaned up, but as a result, we're now seeing an additional expenses in the account where it should be getting paid out of. So that's a little more of the nitty gritty as to how we ended up here, but it is true, seniors are having a lot of fun.
Do we see any uh, you know, since we're seeing these sort of uh, you know, reacting and and dynamic evolving, like do you see any sort of, you know, trends in the kind of programming that's being popular and solid or any unexpected or? I mean, I'm just curious. It's like, I know you pay attention to all that stuff.
Well, not
You're getting older too.
Not so much associated with costs, but I know the um uh the Friday um uh cocktail evening is enjoyed by
I keep hearing that.
Um so if you're looking for something fun to do on Friday. What's that?
Maybe a guest mixologist?
Yeah, yeah, of course you can. I'm sure. You know, uh Kristen would know better. She'd have better sense of trends about uh what we're seeing in terms of activity. I I do know the senior, you know, as she reported a couple of meetings back, the senior center has really provided a lot of outlets for programming. We've been doing a great amount of programming there that we frankly just didn't even have space to do uh in the mansion previously. So um that uh that has really been a success story, a lot more sort of fitness stuff that seniors have been able to engage in has been, has been a a big improvement for for services.
That's great. I'm excited to be here, be supportive of that sort of growth and everything. Any other comments? Yes.
Just at the risk of sounding like um Mark Mather. Because I am the one that's the oldest one here.
Yeah, wait.
I remember a day when we had to fight tooth and nail to get funding for a program. To continue program director funding for that position. And it almost makes me cry to, with joy, to think where we've come. And and who all is able to enjoy what has been created from the rec department. I mean, it is just such, it it just brings me so much joy. So uh this is my ESAC group and they might like for us to read a certain reading next. I don't know if that would be okay, but we're only two away, so they could come in. You guys could come in, but we only have, we have two more to do. Sorry, excuse me. Anyway, that was my comment.
If I, if I may, one other thing, if possible, I I would ask for potential suspension adoption consideration at the next meeting, just because we're gonna have bills that we're not gonna be able to pay uh without it, it looks like. So uh if if council would uh consider that, we'd really appreciate it.
So then we will also need to amend it to have the emergency language in it, cause I don't think it does now. So I will try to
Oh, you're right. Yeah, 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 you're right.
We could go to twenty-seven.
It's fine with me.
Okay, let's read twenty-seven twenty-three, encouraging idling on the streets. Oh, I said paying attention. All right. First reading of ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-three to amend chapter four fifty-two point oh six. Unintend, unattended vehicles duty to lock ignition, remove key, set brake, et cetera, in order to modernize provisions of this section and to expand restrictions on idling for the protection of both the health of citizens and the environment. And to add section six eighteen point twenty-five, animals and unattended motor vehicles in order to protect the health and welfare of animals and unattended vehicles introduced by Ms. Fible.
So I, our last meeting, I shared that this, um I shared, I shared that I was going to introduce this uh soon, uh when we got back, when I was at the last ESAC meeting and and I had some, some really encouraging words from all of you. And so um I'm so thrilled you're here. Uh the first thing I think I would like to ask is, since I started talking about idling and I have had a conversation about idling with council as well as with ESAC, how many of you have thought, I'm idling and turn the car off? I mean, you know, some people are, you know, maybe some of you just don't idle, but I'm hoping that um this is going to be seen as more of a an educational rather than a punitive law. Um and I went a little overboard and I did a quick PowerPoint. Um I actually, my seventeen-year-old helped me with it. But um I just want you to know that every ten minutes your engine is off, you'll prevent one pound of carbon dioxide from being released and carbon dioxide is the primary contributor to um to warming. It's a planet problem. It's a planet problem. Um the, and idling for more than ten seconds uses more fuel and creates more CO2 than just restarting it. Turn it off. It's not bad anymore. It's not bad for your engine to to turn your car off and turn it back on. It doesn't require more fuel to do that. Thirty million tons of CO2 is created yearly just by people idling. And if we would stop, we could really, we would literally take five million vehicles off the road. So um idling cars spew the yucky stuff, just like moving cars do, just as bad. And it's a people problem, okay? Because it causes all kinds of human illnesses. You can see what they do. And the emissions concentrate closer to the ground. Think about that. Who is closer to the ground? Our babies. And where does this happen a lot of the time? Parents idling closer to schools. And children, and I didn't realize that until I started reading about this. And it makes sense. They breathe faster than all of us do. So not cool, not cool for the kids. We need some education on this. And Julius needs to not use red. There are all kinds of misconceptions. People claim letting my car warm up is good for the engine. No. It's not good for the engine, okay? Um it 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 and the cars warm up faster when they're moving. Um on a cold day, it takes too long to warm up my car unless I let it idle first. Yep, that's not the case. The faster you get it moving, the faster it warms up. And thank you. Um I save more money on gas by idling versus restarting the car. Not true, not true. And?
Yep.
Um it's clear, starting and restarting my car will wear out the engine quicker, not anymore. Now, our cars have have really um moved along when it comes to that. Um starting uh okay, no idling. Uh here we go. There are twenty-nine states. Ohio's not one of them. But there are twenty-one, there are twenty-nine states and the District of Columbia currently have laws to reduce the engine idle time on motor vehicles within the state. Now, it's legal to sit in your car, let it idle. It is illegal in the state of Ohio to leave your car idling. And that is what really made me start digging deep into this. I would sit, um I I would get out of my car at Starbucks and I would notice that there was a car idling next to me and I'd look and there's nobody in there. Nothing is in there. People are just leaving their car idling. And the bottom line is it's unhealthy. It's harmful to the environment. It's bad for your engine. And those people are exposing themselves to theft, the possibility of someone taking their car. And I will add that um in just January of um, in just January, there were over four hundred car thefts. Now, we know a lot of them have to do with a certain kind of car. Because those kinds of cars are easy to turn on and get off, but but this is, this is asking for someone to steal your car. And people jump on these simple, simple ways of doing that. So, real quick, um if all six of us, I guess there's five of us now tonight. I was counting on there being six, but let's say the six of us, cause I don't wanna have to do the bath again. Six of us idled for ten minutes. That would be nearly four pounds of CO2. Full of, it takes one fully mature tree to absorb about fifty pounds of CO2 a year. So if each of us idled for ten minutes ten times, we would be eating up one tree in the, in in our arboretum. So there's a lot of trees in our arboretum, but there's a whole lot of people that are idling. Um so we'd really have to be starting to really work on those. The Tree Commission would really have to start working on our heritage trees. Um, so we'd really have to be starting to really work on those. Uh, the tree commission would really have to start working on our heritage trees. They'd really have to start planting a whole, whole lot more of them. So, um. This is, this is my cry out for us to do. One more thing for our environment, just one more thing. Um, I've talked to, um, service director. Um, and Benjamin talked to the chief. Um, the idea is not for this law to be necessarily punitive. Though I do believe that it would be a minor misdemeanor, which would, could be up to a hundred and fifty dollars. If it was something that happened over and over and over again. My hope is that we would arm our police officers with. Some quick bullet points like I presented. For them to hand to people who are, who are idling. It is my hope that we will have signage on certain places where we know that it's especially harmful. For this to be happening. I know that, um, in the city of New York alone. If, if all the idling that they do to be able to. To combat that with trees. They would have to plant trees in all of Manhattan. Twenty-two point seven square miles to combat that. You know, it just, it's a simple something that we can just turn it off. This, this ordinance was, I, I, I did lots of research about, um. You know, what do we do about if it's thirty-two degrees below thirty-two degrees outside, it's freezing? You know, can people do it for five minutes? Can they do it for, you know, should they be able to do it for ten minutes? What if it's over, what if it's over eighty, whatever? The idea is, again, not for it to be punitive, for us to start thinking about it. Just like it became when I first learned to drive, it was not, believe me, I'm that old. It was not a law to have to buckle up. But I couldn't, as a parent, drive out of my driveway without my kids saying, mom. Buckle up. And so that is what I'm hoping. That, that we, you know, are, are one of the first again in central Ohio. We are the cool kids caring about our environment and making this, this a law. So that we all think about it. We think about our environment and we think about what we're causing. Um, it was the mayor's suggestion that we piggyback on that, uh, to talk about. Our, our, uh, animal friends and taking a good care of them, um, as well. And, um, there have been a hundred and eleven dogs that have died. In Ohio, um, since the, since the beginning of the year. And twenty twenty-three isn't even over from being exposed to heat. Um, so we, we really need to start, um, making sure that that's something that we, you know, count for as well. And those are just the ones that have been reported. There were four hundred and fifty-nine rescues that were reported. So. I just wanna think about our furry friends and think about, um, the safety of and health of our children. And the dollars we could save by, by just, um, idling at home and not in our cars. So. I will take any questions if any of my council members have them.
Comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Sod.
Great presentation. Very well done. I kinda feel passionate about this. I don't know if you can tell, um. Uh, the city attorney and I chatted before, before the meeting started and, and will continue to chat. Um, there are cars that have to, that have to idle for safety reasons. And I need to make sure that this, um, covers those. There are police vehicles that have to idle. And there are certain service vehicles that also have to idle for safety reasons. So, um. We need to be able to make sure that what we have written here covers that.
I would comment on that, but I think Sam is.
Couple of questions. So first is that, does this apply to vehicles that are, you know, in traffic, let's say, uh, cause our stoplights often. So, okay, just making sure that, um, cause I know that there's some that are automatic, some aren't, okay?
Right, and they, those are wonderful.
Okay, yeah, and then, um, there, uh, and then secondary, uh, the penalties, you mentioned the penalties. I don't see the penalties. Is there a reference?
That if you go to, if you go to, um, the, um, the, what's that called? The four hundred, four fifty-two oh six. You go to that section, it'll lead you to of the.
It's referenced, okay, cool.
It's a minor misdemeanor and so it would be, the, the most it would be, would be a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, there, 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 if I may, there, there are fi, provisions on fines, you'll see in the four hundred section that it'll refer to. There are some, it, it would be a minor misdemeanor and then it could escalate from there. If there are two, not any, not two, any two violations within a year, it could become a fourth degree misdemeanor.
Okay, thank you. Could I clarify a couple of things too, just in terms of the, of the logic behind? You had mentioned that, I think your first draft, which, you know, you worked on a, like a year ago. I know you've been passionate about this for a while. Had really tried to define all the different situations where idling might be appropriate and sort of give benchmarks to that. And I think as we talked through it, that was one of the hangups, like who's gonna really administer this effectively? Um, and we talked about like, you know, do we want our police wandering around all the time trying to find idling cars and, and penalize people for it? No, why, but I do think we wanna state to the community the value of how this is an important environmental issue. We take it seriously and that we have section of code related to it. To that point, if you read the, the operative language. And this, this section essentially exists already, talking about idling unattended. And so it's really just at, adding this. The sentence that says, no, no person shall allow the engine of a motor vehicle to idle attended. Unless it is for a reason, reason related to the health or welfare of a human being. Um, that. Section, um, that section is pretty, uh, nebulous. And it's, at the end of the day, we don't really see this being something that's going to be, um. Like a law enforcement stick sort of, uh, ordinance. It's gonna be one that's more public education. Gives us the ability to have signage in our parks and other public spaces and other areas that make sense. And gives us the ability to kind of make that, that value statement. If that makes sense.
Oh, oh, actually, never mind. I had a question and I'll call you both separately. Thank you.
Well. If I may, it also, but it does go because the current ordinance allows it if in your own driveway. So this will change that. Again, not that anybody is going on, that the police are coming on people's property to do this, but it's a tool for education.
Right.
Would be a change.
That's a good point. And allows it, allows it, uh, unattended vehicles to idle in your own driveway. And I think one of our, there's not only an environmental concern behind that, but there's also a safety concern around that. And not just security, but safety. There are legitimate scenarios where that could pose a safety issue beyond just a security issue.
And Alan, we understand in case I miss something. So if you have a driveway, currently you can leave it unattended and let, let it idle. And this will modify that to. Okay, just making sure. Alright, thanks.
So I guess with that in mind, first of all, I do wanna reaffirm that, like, that little thing on my car that I hit. Accidentally every now and then that turns my engine off when I stop. That's, that's a good thing. That's helping, right? At the stop signs. Okay, I'll make sure that stays, stays on then, as much as I can do that. But so, cause you had mentioned like these different scenarios and I guess for me. It is very clearly two different scenarios to say, I really kinda hate to see these cars like just. Idling out there, right? They, they pull in front of them, maybe they're waiting for somebody and they're idling or. Especially in the schools and things like that, that are cars that will just sit there and idling. On the other end of that spectrum, I would see like someone with their car in their driveway on a winter morning. That need to, or, or are letting it idle to, you know, warm up, def, defrost those, you know. Windows or something. But there's no provision here to differentiate between that. Is that what I'm understanding? And is there a reason why? There shouldn't be? To whoever, I guess, who?
I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm clear on, on, on your, on your question, but.
I, following the question, the way I'm hearing your question is, uh, currently. If you have a driveway, you can leave your car unattended to warm up and defrost your windshield. By the way, if it's on the street, you can't currently.
Okay.
Um, so there's a different class there, whether it's in the driveway or not. So are we taking away the right of somebody to have a car idling in their driveway? For the purpose of, for example, defrosting a windshield.
Yeah.
With this ordinance. The answer is yes.
Okay.
Now, do we want to? That's a, it's a great question, right?
Right.
I think that, um, that's a really good thing for council to kinda.
I think, I think the owner of the car, who has the car on. And it's defrosting the windshield while they are actively, now actively, um, taking. Scraping. I think you could argue that that is for the safety of the human being. That's getting.
Health or the welfare of a human being that might be included in that?
That, that only comes for attended, but also to your point, you are typically out there scraping your windshield. It is attended.
Right.
And it would be run into the house, leave it there for fifteen minutes to warm up so that you don't have to deal.
Which, which does typically happen too. Yeah, well, someone usually they, if, you know, we do have some very cold wintry days and they'll turn on the engine, they'll scrape and they'll go back in. And they come back out. I'm just, this seems to me like a scenario that I'm envisioning that I would, like, I guess, would think maybe should be considered in here. Just as a, uh, unless I can be told differently that maybe that's not something that should be considered.
Uh, 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 again, I think that I would argue with this, that it will make people think. Twice about doing something like that. I would argue that our police are not going to be. Seeking to give people, you know, um, tickets because, you know, they're, they're doing that. Now, could I envision someone? Saying, um, my neighbor does this for thirty minutes every day, every day. Every day they do it for thirty minutes. They, they, it's stand in their house. They turn their engine on because people do have those.
Yeah.
And they let it idle. Unattended. For thirty minutes every day. Now that would be, that might be cause for the police to say, you know, this is illegal. Please stop doing it.
I think there, there also might be some ways to kind of combine the first and second sentence to add the health and. Welfare to the first sentence somehow, maybe.
But, but it's good, it's good.
Reason, you know, add some.
It's good to think about because that is not a scenario I necessarily have, um, thought about. But I have, um, I'm embarrassed to say that I have, and I'm sure there are other people in this room that have scraped off just, just enough. To be able to see now that. Make sure that they got the kids there on time. Um, so, so, uh, and that is, it's a safety, it's a safety concern, um, making sure that your, your. Car is scraped well or whatever. So, and, and, you know, maybe people will take the easy way out and turn the car on and. Let it do its thing.
What? One, one other thing, Mr. President. And Ms. Fible, uh, to point out is that this does, um, sort of also. Provide another incentive. I'm not saying that people with electric cars should let their cars idle willy nilly. Um, and I would encourage, you know, with electric car to be purchasing clean energy for the electric car, such as wind energy through the city's aggregation program. Um, but, uh, it, electric cars don't fall on this because the motor, the engine is not idling. It's, uh, and there is a difference, you know, with a, with a car, you're burning all that fossil fuel with an engine. Um, and only a small portion of it is actually going towards cooling your car or heating your car. The rest of it's just going up in the atmosphere and destroying the environment. So that is an advantage for electric cars that it's focused just on that thing that you're doing, um, when you're trying to warm up or cool down your car. And to that point, I'm sorry, we are trying very hard to convert fleets first that idle a lot. We were just talking about that with our K nine vehicle. So vehicles that are prone to a lot of idling, we are trying to get those to be electric vehicles, uh, at a higher priority than other vehicles.
Good deal.
So two, two points. The minute this is passed, you have outlawed remote starters in Bexley on. On gas operated vehicles because, and that's just how, I mean, again, that's, that's what this says. Again, the second thing relates to that, cause you're gonna tell, people are gonna say, well, they're not gonna pull them over there. Got a ticket, somebody uses a remote starter, but. Uh, this is a question. I'm not a legislator here. We're talking about passing a law and at the same time saying, but we're not really gonna enforce it. And it's a criminal statute. I'm not gonna say anymore.
I hear your words. Um, and may, I'm sorry, may I?
Of course, yeah.
I, I mean, I, I, I hear your words. Um, there are, I could stand at a crosswalk. And I could, uh, if I were allowed to ticket somebody every time. Somebody doesn't stop for someone who goes on the crosswalk. I, you know, I would, I would be a very wealthy person. Um, that being said, I think this is the. This is the wave of the future. I think that this is a very smart piece of legislation. I think that perhaps, uh, Toronto, it had, you're not allowed to idle a car in Toronto. And indeed, they do fine people five hundred dollars if they're doing it. I mean, we are not, this is not something new and we could, we could enforce it. We could ask our police officers to enforce this. I, I, I would like, I would like our, our executive. Branch to say to his, uh, we're, had a, you know, our, our head of the department, our chief. That this is, is thought to be, at least for now, more of a educational. Law. And, and, and I know that I, I, I can feel the feedback from all of you. That this is, why do we have a law if we're not gonna enforce it?
Good.
Well, we have laws where we give people warnings for things before we know that they've done something. Yeah, again and again, then it becomes different. I mean, there are, it, it, so it's, I guess I'm not. I'm not intending for it to be ignored. I'm intending for it to be more of a gradual educational piece. Where at some point. It will have to be enforced. I mean, I, I still see people going by with their telephones, but how many of you? Have picked up your phone and thought, Ivan was part of that law? You know, I mean, I have picked up my phone in the car. I can't do that. I literally one time threw it in the backseat thinking, I cannot do this. Uh, this is a law that I passed. So, I, I, I don't know, I just think it's, I think it's something that we really need to work on, but.
Did you wanna?
I wanna address the.
Address something.
Okay. Piece and I, I would, I wasn't saying that we wouldn't enforce it. And I, I wanna be clear about that. I was saying that it. It, it is better, so don't let the. It's been too long since, since I was driving for too long. Don't let perfect be the enemy of good, right? So we could come up with every single scenario where it would become dead simple to enforce and just be like, oh, you're definitely breaking the law right now. I'm saying that there is some, there is going to be some interpretation required to say whether or not it is a reason related to the health or welfare of a human being. And in some instances, it will be tough to enforce, especially a hot summer day, waiting in line to pick up your kid from school. Waiting on the side of the street parked legally to pick up your kid from school. Where arguably it's uncomfortable to be hot in that car and it is a health or welfare. And someone could argue, well, I could sit there and get hot or roll down my window and that'll be a tough one to enforce. I know that, we know that. It'll be tough to enforce it in the, in the middle of the winter. It will be really simple to enforce it when a car is sitting unattended at Starbucks, which happens. It will be very simple to enforce it when somebody is observed sitting for thirty minutes waiting to pick up their kid. Idling in the springtime on multiple occasions. I'm not saying that's gonna be, like, people are gonna be caught up in gotcha moments. But I think there will be some very clear scenarios where it will be simple to enforce, others will be a little bit more difficult.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be. I'm just saying, I heard the message, I keep hearing what, kept hearing was, well, this is really to change behavior. It's not to enforce a criminal law. And I just think that if, if that is the intent, and I'm not saying it is. But if that's the intent, as, as your lawyer, I'm just saying you should think about whether you should be passing a criminal law for that intention. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying you shouldn't pass.
Who was, you know what, uh, Sam has already. Who was, you know what, uh, Sam has already spoken once, we'll let him go after you go.
So, food for thought. This was an amazing presentation tonight and like you always do, you bring things up that are thought provoking and. Make change. What if um, we continue the campaign of the education piece that you just presented tonight first? Learn as we go and then, and then look at this, just food for thought. Sam, just something to consider. You don't have to answer.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's good. And we, and we thought, and we thought about that. Anyway, Sam.
So the intent of it, I, I love, and again, I do seriously appreciate the insight and that, you know, I like your statistics, so that's all excellent. And my question kind of that I was, and I started up on and I pulled back to say I would call you both about it was exactly what. Uh, Mark brought up, which is that, no, it's okay. I just didn't, because it's the first reading and so my, you know, I'm. I look at this and I think about who's going to bring this to anybody's attention. Maybe a neighbor that doesn't like their other neighbor. I don't know, maybe something like that. And I don't want to weaponize. Uh, any, you know, the, this ordinance. And so if there's, what I would like to discuss is potentially if we could either. Be extremely specific with the penalties and how they are handed out in terms of how they're listed out. And perhaps even include them here within to state a certain number of warnings, then we get into the minor misdemeanor because. That comes along with the cost too. Um, that comes along with potentially having to hire an attorney, which some, you know, just it makes it a bigger issue or potentially. Eliminating the penalty, um, but also potentially taking budget. Uh, some of our budget to put towards education in the sense of signs and areas where it is more prevalent, um, things of that nature. I guess I'll just throw it out there now because I'll probably call you both about it this week and so, uh, but since Mark brought it up, I wanted to bring it out there. That's where my concerns are, but I do appreciate the, uh, the, the ultimate goal of ordinance twenty seven, twenty three.
Same as your, as your concern, the penalty or the application or the. You know, the specific.
It, it, it comes down from a bit of both and I just think about it from, uh. Because I think about this through a lot of things, it's personal experiences with frankly, uh, you know, with, with how neighbors interact and unfortunately. Uh, not everybody is as friendly to each other as, as we would like them to be. And so I just think about a situation where how can we, uh. Frankly, you know, we don't, they don't do something that we like, so we're going to keep an eye out for every single detail. Uh, that they do wrong and then we're going to utilize this. And when the police don't enforce it, now we're upset because you're not doing what we've asked. And I just want to be very specific in the penalty portion of this, I think, because. It, it, that's, it's just concerning to me. That's about it. I was, just because I see a lot of, as we said, it's kind of broad as it is, right? For the health and safety and well-being of individuals, you know, I'm thinking about when I do this. With my daughter, when, so cars not cold when she gets in there. Um, also because you have to get to school and I want my windows to be clear, et cetera, as you brought up. Um, so I just want to be. Make sure we are thoughtful with that penalty and that's why I was asking initially about the, where it's referenced, so I can do a little bit more. Um, but it is the first reading, so we have some time to work through. So thank you for bringing it.
On the, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, yeah.
I just, I'll piggyback off of that and I, I love. The thought, the message, I, I, I understand where it's coming from. A, a couple of points and kind of to Mark's, uh, comments. I don't see it being enforceable. Um, but also. I don't know every law in our code and, you know, and, and I look at them often. Um, I, I can't imagine the thirteen thousand residents know the laws and so then you're putting. The dissemination of the information on the officer, when they happen to randomly go by somewhere and they. Um, they give someone a warning. I, I think it would be. I think I would be more in favor of a, of a big campaign or a big market and big marketing push. To, to get it all out there first and then maybe piggyback with a law on it after we've. We've told everyone in the community, uh, hey, you know, this is how we want to go. Um, I, I just think it would, it would hit home better if it would, it would land better with a broader base. Um, because we put this law on here, we pass it. I know we have thousands watching on YouTube. But, um. You, you can see what I'm saying. I, I just don't think, and, and I know we might put in the blast or we might, but I think the campaign push or the, the marketing for it first. And then we come back with, okay, now, now we're going to, we, we've told everyone, this is what's going to happen. Now, we put it in the code. I think that would be a. In, in my mind, that would be a more.
I would love to see informational campaign on that too, because I really was not trying to be funny when I said, I wonder if that. You know, does anything like my, you know, I hear other cars like, oh, their engine started up too and my startup, I'm like. You know, is it, I don't know, you know, I assume it is, but I have never, I've never really heard. You know, like, because the cars sometimes stopped for, I don't know, four seconds versus, you know, or whatever. And, uh, I did have a very, you know, smart friend when I was in college and he would. Claim some statistic about how long to start the ignition versus, and I can't remember what that number was, but then. My brain always does that too. And I'm like, well, wait, was my car stopped long enough for it, you know, whatever.
I know Sam maybe have your hand raised. I just want to speak. I, 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 because we went back and forth on this with. My initial cynicism with your initial draft, but my belief in not idling. And oh, can we just market it and have this campaign? And so let my cynicism carry forward to that some more, which is to say. We do campaigns all the time and they have. You know, they have a fairly limited reach, no matter how much money we put into it or how much we try to get messages in front of people's faces. Without, without um, enforcement capacity or some sort of hook. Um, on something like this where it requires uncomfortable change of behavior. It is uncomfortable to change behavior. With this particular topic where I'm used to letting my car sit, maybe for ten, twenty, thirty minutes. Uh, when I could just roll down my window and let us all breathe more clearly. That is an uncomfortable change in behavior. So just saying, please don't do it. You know, with those signs are up and down the school, school right now that say, please don't do it. And we watch people do it all the time. And so I was gonna, I had meant to include this photo in my mayor's update. And I think it's not going to show up, even though I just told it to, really, we're really crushing it today. Which is when we added this signage just recently, um. No passenger unloaded near the intersection. Well, why not? Well, because the city code says not to, that's why not. And you know that because there's a reference to the code that there's potential implication to your action. That small little bit of. Verbiage at the very bottom means something. And so I think that when we pass a law and we shouldn't, we should not do it foolishly or half-heartedly or not thinking through. All of the very important questions that get raised, but when we pass that law, it allows us then to educate the community. Um, by saying it's important enough that it's written in our books. It's important enough that we're putting signage out and we're explaining. Where it's written in our books and we're educating around it. We did this, um. We've done this successfully in the past with campaigns where we have a heavy warning philosophy around it and we can maybe codify that. That's a good city attorney question. Um, but I just think that having the force of a law really does elevate this to saying, this is important. It's, you know, not just a communications campaign, this is something that matters to our environment. So I would, I would advocate. That I think having it in the law makes a ton of sense and then a communication about it follows, uh, that, that change of law.
Same, or do you get your hand up there? You just, is that?
And I'm just going to make a comment. I agree that it's tough to change and some things are uncomfortable, but I'm thinking back to the campaign in regards to recycling. Where I've changed my behavior. And I state that just the fear of, of Elizabeth Elman coming by and telling me that my, my, my wife was giving, and I. I say jokingly, but seriously, I mean, it's, it's made me think twice. And I think about even when I'm up here, you know, what do I do with this cup? I've asked you, what do I do with this stuff? So I don't, and so I, I, I understand. That fear, but it didn't come with a criminal penalty, right? It came with something that was uncomfortable. So maybe if there is a medium ground there where, you know, where we can get somewhere without the criminal penalty. But find something that can enforce it, just throwing it out there since we're on the first reading.
Like we'll post your photo to the blast.
Public humiliation, it impacts people.
Which, uh, which part of the, uh, animal part is existing and which is new? You said that we were piggybacking onto the animal. I know I saw.
So this doesn't exist. Um, it was in looking at this and thinking about, well, what about an animal? Um, and I realized that we did not actually have a legal implication of leaving an animal.
That's not, that's not in Ohio code.
That you. It would be carried through in our code if it were typically.
That surprises me.
Be carrying through in our code.
I did the research around this Troy several months ago, so let me refresh my memory.
Please do. That would really disturb me if it is not in Ohio code. I'll go back to it. That, that is.
If this dog gets hold of the teeth though.
Yeah, I think there's some states that do have that and some others don't. And I, I don't.
Yeah, I would always imagine me, people would leave their animals in a.
Research thoroughly enough that I believe that it was missing.
Um, Matt first here, I'm sorry. I jumped in front of him actually.
And, and I, I agree that teeth help, but. Mark's comment struck with me because I have a remote car starter and I know a lot of people who have remote car starters and come winter. When we're all using our remote car starters and nobody knows about this law. Um, I don't know, I, I'm just more on teeth on the backend, education upfront on this one. Because I can only imagine what it's going to be like this fall or this winter when remote car starters are now legal. In Bexley.
I think Matt just incriminated himself there.
They are currently on.
Not in my garage, my garage door's open, so there's carbon dioxide over my driveway.
I'm going to move on to Ms. Saad here. Yes.
Just speaking to technology in these situations and section two A here, I was just sharing with council member Klingler. I recently saw a Tesla with a screen that shared with me as I was going into UPS. Um. That the dog is okay, the car is at seventy-two degrees.
I'd say, explain that.
Talk to the vehicle.
The screen in the car says that the temperature is okay for the dog.
Yeah, there's a pet mode.
Oh, that's nice.
You put it in and it says to anyone who's about to break the window to free the animal.
Yeah.
Because you can't even hear it cooling the car because it's using much less energy than running.
Jess was getting ready to break the window.
It says, hey, it's okay, the dog's cool. Here's the internal temperature of the car. Uh, it's all good. Please don't break into my car. Um, I will, uh, and I, I will, I now remember, I just went back to some notes.
Okay.
In Ohio, the law that exists allows somebody to, without implication, rescue an animal. That has been left unattended, but it does not make it illegal to leave an animal. That's.
Huh, wow.
At the risk of, if I may prolonging this discussion, I just also, uh, in fairness, want to remind folks who are here that. When city council, and it might only, probably was only the two of you, when city council passed the handheld device ban. That the firm practice was going to be warning before ticketing, so until people get used to it.
Mm-hmm.
Just saying, I know that's, doesn't mean, I don't mean to sound inconsistent with what I said before, but I mean, there's, yeah, it was discussed. And, and Chief Reinhardt explicitly, you know, made that clear too. So, sorry, I didn't mean to prolong.
We should probably go back to, uh, communications slash light enforcement blitz on that as well, because I see a lot of violations of that.
All right, uh, any further questions or comments? Very good discussion, everybody. Really, uh, pretty nice. And thanks, yeah, yeah.
At least one of you, you stayed, that's.
Yeah, holding out, love it. All right, we're going to have to circle back on one of these, uh.
Twenty-six, twenty-three.
Yeah.
We have a first reading of ordinance twenty-six, twenty-three to establish the position of human resource coordinator and to establish the pay range at twenty-seven, twenty-six. Per hour to forty-one, sixty-one per hour and to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to the salary and wages line item. To the, of the mayor's office account and to declare an emergency, Ms. Lamke and Saad.
Yeah, so, um, this is basically getting us set up for the HR coordinator position. And it looks like we are, uh, needing to get this through tonight.
Tell us what's up with this HR position, Mr. Mayor. I know you've been working on it.
Uh, well, I just woke up one morning in July and thought we should think about HR here.
This is a great idea that you had.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I want to obviously, uh, provide many thanks to. Counsel and our auditor for, uh, encouraging me to study more deeply a HR position. I am. Uh, famously reticent to create additional overhead in the city, as you know, but nonetheless, I like to be smart about the way that we're doing that. And so we went about and we had an audit performed. The audit indicated that there were, we could benefit from a more centralized HR function, uh, recommended. That we look at a potential like outside contractor to help us with that or potentially a position. We started looking at a consultant to fill that and determine that, uh. It would be, uh, cost prohibitive, just didn't make sense financially to spend as much as it would take for a consultant to do what could be done by an employee. Um, I will remind counsel that we knew that we're probably going to be looking at HR some, some way, shape or form. And we set aside fifty thousand dollars in the budget to implement some form of HR. Um, and that's, I'm going to cart before the horse. So. After having not found a consultant, uh, that made sense, we posted a position. Um, we posted as either sort of a robust part-time or a full-time position. Uh, we, uh, interviewed. After having received dozens of applications, more than dozens of applications, uh, I want to thank Natalie for helping to narrow down. Uh, to sort of a twenty, twenty or so candidates that we initially interviewed. Um, and then came down to a candidate that I am excited to give an offer to. I cannot do that until we have actually created a position through council. Um, so the candidate that, that, uh, came through, um, would be a. About a twenty-five hour per week employee. Um. And the cost that's reflected up there, uh, reflects, um, you know. About half of a year worth of employee under the, under this position, maybe a little bit less than actually. Um, so, uh, I am asking that you spend and adopt it. Um, tonight for a couple of reasons. A, the financial implication has already been reflected in the budget. Uh, B, we've talked a lot about it and C, we have a really, uh, excellent candidate. Um, and I want to make sure that we're responsive to that and, and responsible and moving forward with that position.
And that twenty-five thousand is in addition to the fifty thousand that's already been.
The fifty thousand is like a, it's not appropriated. It was a placeholder in our budget. So that it's sort of reflected on the bottom line. So the, essentially, it's actually a reduction in our annual expected expenditures because we won't be spending fifty, we'll be spending twenty-five.
I'm not even going to look behind me and call on Sam Marcelino for his comments and questions.
I just want to, uh, thank you so much for your willingness to look into this for the city itself. Um, I think that one of the hardest things for, um, any, uh, I would say employer is to consider HR. Uh, I, my, I say this, uh, knowing that my wife is the president of the Human Resource Association in central Ohio. Uh, nobody likes HR, uh, in general, right? But it, but once you actually look at what they're capable of doing, um, you come to see how important it is. Um, and in the city of Bexley, I, I certainly think it will be a benefit. Uh, the thing I'm most looking forward to is frankly, giving you more time to develop the projects within this city that you've worked so hard on. And, uh, you know, I, I think that it'll be, uh, an asset to you and many others through the community. To have these policies and procedures in place that this HR professional helps you create over time. But, um, uh, but honestly, the evaluation process, um, looking into the different options, making sure that we didn't. Jump too quickly. Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for taking that time to come to this conclusion. Because after hearing all the options from the HR audit and, uh, seeing what we could do, I certainly think that this is just a great fit. For what we need in terms of HR at this point. And, uh, I think that the, uh, new HR employee will be lucky to have you. Um, to, to follow around and create procedures and policies with. One of the best. So just thank you in, in general, and I look forward to seeing how we grow as a community based upon this.
Well, thank you, Sam. I appreciate that. I, um, when I mentioned council has had an interest in it, as you all know, Sam, you've been. A passionate and vocal member about that because of your, um, understanding of HR and, uh, you know, I think. As I, I said to you on the phone the other day when I called you about this, um, you know, we all. I, I had a preconceived notion of what does HR look like? And I was like, I'm not sure that we need that. But, but I've been educated through it, you know, when we all have our blind spots or areas where we can learn more. And the thing that has emerged, uh, from this for me is that I came in. Uh, thinking, you know, like I'm, I, as I said, I'm very protective of ongoing cost centers in the city. And so I like to. Uh, thinking, you know, like I'm, I, as I said, I'm very protective of ongoing cost centers in the city, and so I like to be very strategic about that. But as I was, um, more educated about what. Not just what I thought HR meant, but what it could be, uh, specifically employee development retention, um. Uh, set, you know, uh, standardization of a lot of what we're doing. I I've I've become very enthusiastic about this and excited about it, genuinely excited about it. So that by the time we were interviewing our final round of candidates, I was like, yes, all right. What do you, what do you have? What do you guys, what have you done? Like, how can you help us? And so I'm, I am, uh. I'm very excited about the position. I think it's gonna be a great value to our, our city. Residents won't really know it, but it will be a great value and and the employee. Uh, who we hope to engage, uh, employ in this, um, has a real heart for that, a real authentic. Uh, optimistic energy about how this can provide value to our residents, and that's really exciting to me. So, thank you.
Sam, you should probably stop writing. No one likes HR on your anniversary cards. Say that. Questions or comments here? Uh, since we are anticipating a suspended adopt, I will extend questions, comments to the audience on this. If. Was that a question or a comment? Were you gonna hear anything? Oh, you said it was a great idea?
Um, are you a resident?
Since Louis six six three, you're clear. I think it's a great idea. You should go for it.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Todd, then I believe you've got, uh, something here that going on.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to on ordinance twenty six twenty three to suspend and adopt.
You're gonna suspend the three reading rule.
Suspend the three reading rule on ordinance twenty six dash twenty three.
Motion to suspend the three reading rule by Ms. Saad. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcelino. Please call the roll.
Mr. Klinger.
Yes.
Ms. Feible.
Yes.
Mr. Marcelino.
Yes.
Ms. Saad.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes. Now your second motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty six dash twenty three.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Saad, seconded by Mr. Marcelino. Roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Merkum.
Yes.
Ms. Saad.
Yes.
Mr. Klinger. Ms. Feible.
Yes.
This is Mr. Marcelino.
Yes.
That is a unanimous passage, which was necessary legally, legally. So, thank you very much.
Good job. All right, we are on to a first reading of ordinance twenty eight twenty three to amend chapter fourteen fifty six oh one, registration required and to provide standards of care. For the areas surrounding trees in the tree lawn, Ms. Bible.
So our wonderful, um, a tree commission member, uh, Jim Wilson is going to join us next week. To talk a little bit more about the history of this, um, piece of legislation. It just, you know, it's, it's too much idling, too much, too much mulch, too much noise are gonna, is going to be my, um, mantra for the next. Few, um, weeks and, um, too much mulch is the beginning of what this, uh, ordinance is about. Um, and also add some other language, how to protect some of our public trees in the, um. What many of us call the tree lawn. It also will require landscapers to be one of our, um, contracted. I forget the read. I don't, do you have the?
Yes.
The ordinance itself.
I apologize. It looks like it. Looks like it wasn't the packet. It is now in the packet. So I didn't realize that.
But it makes, um, the, um, a landscaper one of those, um, occupations that are registered, um. With our. With our city. So, um. So we can talk about that more, um, next week, um, when, um. When Jim Wilson comes to speak with us, but is there anything you wanted to add about it? Mayor.
That, well, I think you covered it all. It's, uh, it's a fairly narrow field of person that are are contractors that needs to be registered here. We thought carefully about like. You know, are we making every landscape firm? Register? No, we're not. We're making firms register that are installing in the tree lawn and that's. That's not a typical practice for small landscapers or, you know. Kids that are working on the, on, on their neighbor's property. Um, and I believe that we have a particular interest in making sure that that tree lawn, um, and the health of the trees is protected. And so you may expect to see an amendment because there's some disagreement about how to exactly word. What a mulch volcano is in section two here. Uh, so, uh, we don't define it as a mulch volcano, but this is, this is what we're trying to get at. And so, uh, it'll probably have a little bit of horse trading as we try to figure out, you know, is, you know, how do we, how do we really word this problem? But the bits of problem, problem is that the trees are getting. Um, choked out by excess mulch, which is unhealthy for them and does not help ensure the health of our city trees, uh, in long term.
And it doesn't then allow our mature, healthy trees to be sinks for carbon monoxide. So I'm just saying. Just saying, just saying, we gotta protect our trees so that they can absorb the. The idling. Well, if y'all wanna idle, if y'all wanna just keep idling, then we better protect the trees.
So one sentence that kind of stands out to me is a little awkward. Uh, especially kind of given the description you just gave is the homeowners who perform work on their own property with their own hands. As, can you tell me like, what, what does that mean? And that is that a little baby?
Being, this is being put, the bold is new. This is being put in our existing registration required. And so there are contractors required today. Only these contractors, plumbers, general contractors, electricians, sewer tappers or heating and cooling contractors. Those are the only contractors that are currently required to register with the city to to perform work. And that's because if, if you think about, those are all contractors engaged in trades that could impact the health and safety of, uh. Typically the home environment. Um, and so. What it then says later on down there is if you are doing your own plumbing. You know, obviously you should pull a permit for most of that plumbing or some of that plumbing. You are allowed to do that without registering yourself. Uh, as a contractor. Um, you still have to comply with laws and regulations, but you're able to do that work without being registered with the city. It might be antiquated language, but that's what it's intended.
That's maybe problematic.
Yeah, what if you don't have pants?
I, I have neighbor, I have community members who do not. Yeah. So I would just say that maybe is worth consideration as well. Yeah. You're, you're not granted permission to speak here, Mr. official. And that, that would also prohibit like what you were just saying, like have a neighbor child like work on your yard, right? Or? Is that?
It would if they were putting mulch around the city tree. They wouldn't need to be registered.
Oh, okay.
If you are putting mulch around your own city tree. You would not need to be registered.
Okay.
I guess, although. You still, you still aren't allowed to do this.
Right. You still can't create a mulch volcano. Yeah.
But the reality is, so what, what is important about this is while people do put mulch around their tree, that happens. Where, where this is observed, what the infraction that is observed is according to our tree professionals, and I verified it subjectively. So this is not like very data driven. But this is happening in the context of a contractor coming through and just dumping a ton.
Yeah.
You know, when you and I do it around our tree, we're probably don't have bucket loads of mulch to just dispense.
Yeah.
Like we're just a different sort of ethos around it. So there is a particular practice that keeps occurring within the professional landscapers. And we've tried education, by the way, we've asked them to come in, we've had forums and workshops and letters that have been sent, and it's just not doing it.
Is it? I mean, is that just they've contractors feel like they're. Visually doing something more dramatic by leaving a giant.
Think it really shows that like, look how much mulch.
Yeah.
It's great. You really got a lot of value. I also think that having, you know, there's a seasonal workforce that doesn't necessarily get educated year over year.
Yeah.
Um, and there's no accountability to be able to say, hey, we asked you not to do this and you did it.
Yeah.
A licensing.
Yeah.
Is why we were trying to add that in it because that's the level of accountability.
I want Jim Wilson to bring some visuals with him when he comes. Oh, yeah.
I'll mention it. Facts.
Yes.
Midwest loves their mulch.
Other fact, mulch sequesters carbon. Not as effectively as other things, though. It's a form of carbon sequestration.
There we go. Other comments or questions? All right, we got one more.
All right, resolution, first reading resolution four dash twenty three to authorize the mayor to seek financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission. For funding of various capital infrastructure improvement projects, Ms. Lamke or Ms. Saad, as the case may be.
Yes. So I am going to, uh, let the mayor do a deeper dive into this one.
So, um, as you guys know, we have Ohio Public Works Commission funded projects from time to time. We took a pause last year, uh. Under the, uh, understanding that like we had kind of entered this annual mode with OPWC and as we looked at our. Longer term forecasts realized we could not afford to just every year have an OPWC project churned. So, uh, our next, um. OPWC project that's up, uh, based upon. Street surface conditions, but more importantly, uh, waterline conditions are aligned those street surface conditions. We look at water break histories. We look at water break histories that also align with streets that are needing to be replaced soon. And we look at, um. Projects that will score well with Ohio Public Works Commission. Based upon that, the city engineer feels that, um. South Cassingham, south of Main Street, Montrose and South Remington. Would benefit from an OPWC project, uh, intends to, uh, apply for those funds. Now, I have not yet answered the question that I have. Which is, I thought that a portion of South Remington is already included and exists in OPWC. So.
I thought it was too.
I think that is the case, and I think that this is the, another portion of South Remington that wasn't. So there, you know, there's central South Remington and South, South Remington.
For some reason I was tuned into that too. I don't remember.
Yeah. Uh, so I will, I will circle back.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions? Otherwise, we have to finish with all the first reading legislation, and that's always sad.
It is sad. But I closed my computer, so.
Well, Mark closed his computer. I still will allow comments or questions. If not, we will move to, uh, committee reports and first up is Jessica Saad with Recreation and Parks.
Yes, um, so it was a busy July and I saw we weren't here in chambers, but we were all out and about. Um, we had a very nice library presentation by Michael Stiziano, our Franklin County auditor. Um, it was well attended. I want to thank the Lewises for being there to support, um, the talk that night. It was on the Franklin County Property Reappraisals. And, um, Bill, our former auditor, Bill Harvey was there in attendance. So it was great. Uh, library did, as they always do, a great job. Um, thank you to Paige Bellata for all the time and efforts that she always does in supporting us and getting those. Um, talk tracks up and running for our community.
And thank you for organizing that. Property appraisal is all the buzz right now. So that is a really great opportunity.
It is on YouTube. Um, so if anyone wants to go back and re-educate themselves on Michael's presentation, they can access it.
Yes, and also. Those about, you might have just said this, but we were talking land use strategy, sorry. The website that now shows us our preliminary numbers is out.
Yep.
You might have said that already.
No.
What is new this year that I have not seen in the past and is very helpful is it kind of forecasts? What does that do to your taxes?
Oh, wow.
And it illustrates very clearly.
He brings that up in the presentation and.
Right.
People really, um, were receptive to that.
And so those numbers are live and you can look at your home right now and see what the auditor thinks it's worth and you can see what it does to your taxes. Um, and I think it's helpful because you realize, oh, my gosh, my house went up this much. Whoa. But then you're like, oh, okay, hold on. It's not. The end of the world. The property taxes are not changing radically. Um, so that, that piece of information is, is great.
I concur. Um, then I have a picture if we want to put it up. I don't know.
Would love to.
Yeah.
Put up a picture.
So.
It's in there. It's great.
Um, I had the privilege of writing my first Pelotania with, um, Hayden Saad, my first born. When you're fourteen, you can join. Your, uh, loved ones out there and, um. He received quite the education on what it means to, you know, fundraise for cancer and actually get out there and, um, do the work. Um, he had the opportunity like I have, this is my fifth year writing to meet a lot of survivors, um, people writing for those they've lost. As the mayor knows, I wrote my first Pelotania with Mayor Kessler, um, back in twenty eighteen. And, um, it's just, Team Bexley does it very well. They, um, you know, there's eighty three writers to date. That are part of Team Bexley. There are four challengers and one volunteer. Um. It's, you know, just very well done. Um. We put together a great community effort behind the ride and it was really awesome to share it with Hayden because I know with just by him writing, we're gonna get more youth out there next year. I will say, since he's been born, he is a kid you have to keep up with. So when we finished, he goes, we're writing the hundred next year, mom.
Wow.
So here we go.
You deserve that. Yeah.
Report.
You, you get the kid you deserve, you know? Um, finance committee was Ms. Lankie. I don't know if there's a, any report.
Yes, there is.
Ms. Lamke, um, asked us all to start thinking about budget once, given budget season is coming up. End of report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Marcelino, safety and health.
No report. Thank you.
Uh, Strategic Committee, Jen Robinson, she did not leave any report with me. I don't know if she contacted anybody. I'll look around. If not, Mr. Klinger, zoning and development.
Um, as you mentioned earlier, we are in the process of land use strategy commission two point O. And the mayor and I are gonna get together next week to send out dates for our future meetings.
Does there a date for the next meeting for that?
There's not yet.
Okay.
Between, uh.
Just checking.
Council recess, vacations, kids going back to school. We.
I know. That's why I wouldn't remember the date if there was one.
Uh, and also we're doing a couple, we're gonna do like lunch and learn type. Programs where we have some highlighted topics for commission members to learn more about such as link us.
That is. Link us, Sebus, uh, we're doing.
Capitals.
Cap, yep. We have a, we have a laundry list of people to contact.
Slu.
Yeah, real estate.
Really, really great stuff.
Yeah.
Really good stuff. Service and environmental, Ms. Feible.
So we started that tonight. Tomorrow night is, um, Tree Public Garden. I'll be talking to them about my latest proposed legislation. Um, to, uh, I think. You guys are gonna hear a voice or. I think you're gonna need to do that.
It just won't be really.
Uh, um. Uh, BC and E has had a great season so far. Um, our committee is, has one more Jazz in the Park, which. The mayor mentioned is smoking fire. We've got some great reggae bands coming for that, and I think it's gonna be really special this year, um. Our second, so I look for it to be busier, um, and it's gonna be at night. So it's gonna be more of a fun Saturday night to. To do that. Yeah, it's gonna be hopefully less hot, though ironically, we're hoping. Because it's later on in the evening, uh, Labor Day Block Party is partnering, partnering again with Brew Fest. That sounds wonderful and, um. The mayor is going to be down his favorite person who. Sells the food because. I'm out of town. So, um, uh, also, um, we have one more main event and it's the twenty ninth and it's gonna be Top Gun Maverick. And I think it's gonna be really fun because Brian, not only is because it's great, is it?
Oh, man. Giant birthday cake.
Well, we're, we're, we're working on some fun stuff like that, but what's really exciting is Brian Drury.
Helicopter.
From the chamber is planning all kinds of really fun events that week, the week that builds up to that, um. Saturday because Ottervine and Capitol, uh, play against each other and he's trying to create a Michigan, Ohio State thing. You know, we're gonna have the mayor's cook off. Westerville Mayor, Bexley Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
We.
We're gonna have some, don't think.
We found out.
Surprise.
Well, no, we.
Do that?
No, we found out that the Academy Bexley game is Friday night.
Friday night, so we might have to.
So I, before everyone gets super invested.
Rivalry night.
What's happening? We have to discuss that tomorrow.
All right, okay, well.
I was hot out the press.
We'll still be showing at some point.
It's gonna be awesome.
It's gonna be great. Top Gun Maverick. And I also think that the things that Brian has planned for that week, please pay attention. Um, and BC and he will be supporting him with some really fun. Capitol, uh, Ottervine things, you know, everything from, I think, um, a blood drive to, you know, a, uh, in the dove. Contest, gosh, I only knows he has lots of exciting stuff. contest. Gosh, Alino's, he has lots of exciting stuff planned. So, that's all I got.
Do you want to?
Oh, I actually have one more thing. I talked to um to President Markham about this. There is a student who approached me um from Saint Charles last spring and said he would really, really love to be um to, to be a part of local politics. He'd like to see what it looks like. And I encouraged him to try to see if he could get an internship with the mayor over the summer. The mayor was inundated with fabulous, fabulous um with interns, but um we thought maybe it might be a great idea if he were one of our interns, council's intern. So hopefully you're gonna see um a nice young man um when basketball is not um competing with his schedule, showing up here. And um perhaps we can find some fun things for him, you know, to do so that he could see a little bit of what it looks like.
So and will, will you be introducing him to us at some point?
I will. I I have not yet had an opportunity to have a sit down with him um to have conversation with him about that. But all of these wonderful experiences that these young kids that we have an opportunity to 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 foster some knowledge and experience for them also gives them fabulous things to brag about on their college um resumes. So.
And I would just say like, uh, thank you for that, for for, you know, sort of bringing that opportunity here. And I would just say like, you know, uh, when you have an intern and a student or someone that's expressed interest in that, I think it's not necessarily that you feel like you need to, you know, find a bunch of work for the intern or anything like that, but it is someone who isn't, who is interested. And if you can even just provide, you know, one or two opportunities or interactions for them, I think it really is something that you can underestimate that that you can do for for someone like that. And I think I would encourage you then to to do at least some sort of interaction with him and and uh
I love it.
And that. Yeah. Yep, and you all are fantastic role models. Uh, and probably the intern would be very lucky and serve to uh to get your attention on something. Thank you. Uh, public comments, no speaker required, sleep most, no speaker slip required. Thank you for that.
Constance Louis six six three, you Claire. We have so many things going on in this city, so many wonderful things, and I am so thankful for modern technology. Because last Thursday, we were unable to attend the ARB, which is heartbreaking for us because we attend those. Um, we also were unable to attend Larry Hellman's um presentation at the library, and thank goodness for modern technology because I'll be able to tune into that. Um, but I did hear the buzz about that. And because of that information, we now have in our front yard a Bexley Century Home.
Oh.
Which are, if you're, if your home in Bexley is over a hundred years old, you can have one of these blue and white lovely things, Crane Family, and uh, and I think the Bexley Community Foundation has has foot the bill for these little gems. So that's really wonderful. And um we, we did go to Pro Music at Franklin Park Conservatory, so that that was a delightful night with Franklin Park, you know, the the Palm House lit up in the back as the sun goes down, that lovely music little thing across the air. That was great. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to say is Capital University now has a brand new football field. And it looks terrific, and the guys have been out there, kids have all been out there playing on it, and we have stopped hearing the beep 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 sound. Yeah, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right. Okay, just checking.
I do not believe we have an executive.
Nothing to see here, apparently. Mr. Klingler, did you have something you were gonna say?
I was gonna make motion to adjourn.
Oh, all right, well.
Before we adjourn, sorry, I would do, can I take a moment to inform you guys as well? We will have a Board of Control meeting later this week that we need to schedule.
Right.
Related to the Columbia, the Commonwealth Park utility work.
Okay.
So um, we'll, we'll get that out. Anyone who wants to attend is welcome to do so. It's a public meeting. Uh, and we would love to have you.
Even though we don't know when it'll be, but
We need to.
It's soon.
With our
It's gonna be soon.
We called it right now, but
We technically could, but yeah, not without Nick Peck.
You like fun border control.
There was a motion to adjourn, but nobody seconded it.
Second.
Second, but Ms. Marcelino all in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody. It's good to see you again.
Oh, all right. My legs.